Hello, everybody. Um, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 12th, 7:05 PM. And I'd like a motion to go into executive session to discuss 2.1 negotiations matter BHTA and 2.2 legal matter individual employee. So could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, see you soon. Hello, everybody. Um, the board entered into executive session to discuss 2.1 negotiations matter BHTA and 2.2 legal matter individual employee. So now if we could stand for the pledge. Oh, a motion?
Do the revision, yeah?
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we move to comments from the public. Is that right? Are there any comments from the public? There are none, we want to move on uh to the revisions and the adoption of the agenda. So we have some revisions tonight. We're going to revise the agenda to include uh three new items. Um, first, we're going to have two items from to add it to the executive session. 2.3 legal matter individual employee. We have 2.4 legal matter individual employee. And then for the uh public meeting, we have an addition of 6.1 personnel resignation for the purpose of retirement. So could I have a motion to approve the? Yes, all of those revisions. So moved. Second. All in favor? Good, thank you. Okay, and then we'll move on to number six. Uh consent agenda personnel. Uh, I'm sorry, 6.1 consent agenda personnel. We have 7.1 consent agenda CSE, sub CSE, CPSE recommendations. And we have 8.1 consent adjus- agenda for business. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agendas?
So moved.
Chair? All in favor? Great, thank you. And then we'll move on to number nine, which is our special report curriculum conversation, world languages.
Hi, we ready to roll?
We are ready to roll. We're happy to have um Ms. Melissa Stahl here, the chairperson of the World Language Department. Um, as you know, every summer the board gets together or the administrators get together and we reflect on the previous year's work. We talk about our goals for the year and we set goals and we have curriculum conversations um in October with administrators. And also what I've been doing regularly now is having our department chairs and directors come to the board meeting um to give us state of the department um presentation. This is an opportunity to go a little deeper than just our conversations with all the administrators where we can just scratch the surface. So here we're able to go deep with Melissa. She will talk about where she's been as a department, where they're going, the rationale behind that, talk about student learning. Um, and I invite the board to jump in at any point to ask questions. This is meant to be a discussion. Although just turn it over to Melissa. She'll have a lot to say for a long time because it's a lot of work she's been doing over the past several years. You may recall that in um nine years ago in 2015, um Melissa led a tri-state consortium visit. We just had our visit last week with science. Melissa went through that process and did that self-study for her department 10 years ago. And a lot of her goals are continuing. That really um grew from that um visit from our um colleagues in neighboring districts. That helped us think deeply about our work and that has generated a lot of work going forward. Um, so I want to turn it over to Melissa and um feel free to jump in.
Yes, please ask questions.
Thanks for being here, Melissa.
And let's see if it works. It works, great. So I wanted to get started with our district's philosophy on what we want to do or our goals for our students. Um, we, this came out of that 2015 tri-state visit where we really focused on global competency. At that point in time, it was a new buzzword that nobody was working on. Since, quickly after our tri-state visit, um ACTFOL, the American Council on Teaching Foreign Language, as well as the AP College Board jumped on on board with the concept of global competency. And they decided that it wasn't sufficient enough for our students just to have the knowledge of grammar and vocabulary, but they needed to have that intercultural connectedness to the rest of the world. And how do we develop our students to understand cultural differences, uh accept cultural um perspectives of different people and use that together with the grammar and the vocabulary to really have language learning?
Melissa, is ACTFOL really like the gold standard of?
Gold standard, yes, 100%. And then it's funny because I'll talk a little bit about AP College Board and their position on language in a couple of slides. But ACTFOL is international, it's the American Council, but they are a leading board um internationally as well. So uh to get started, I just wanted to give an overview of what our enrollment actually looks like. So currently at the high school, we have 315 students in Spanish, 160 students in Italian, and 62 in French. Um, I've been here for 27 years and the French program has been consistently small, but consistently steady. So don't be alarmed by those numbers. If you take a look at the the number up in the corner, 72% of our high school student body is enrolled in a language class. And that goes from a Level 1 up into the AP, including our communications program for the Spanish students.
Yeah, did Byram Hells, we require how many years of world language?
So at Byram Hells, let me talk about that with this next slide. We actually require two years of, two credits of a foreign language. So they'll get one credit out of 7th and 8th grade and then they have to complete 9th grade, which is also known as Level 2, for graduation requirement. So if you take a look at these enrollments, this is by grade. We have 180 students enrolled in Level 2 classes. There's only 178 students in the freshman class. So that constitutes um second language learners. So kids who wanted to double up on a language. So that's where we get the 101%. Um, you see a little bit of a trail off going into 10th grade. 175 students currently enrolled are at 95%. Colleges really want to see three years of a language. That's, that's where we're at with that. So that's how you start to see the trend. 11th grade, what happens in 11th grade is, oh, students can take AP exams and AP classes. So you've got your science courses, your math courses, all of your other specialty courses for AP. So that becomes a competing factor. Since the startup hasn't started, as well as global scholars, they have so many different electives that they can take. Something's got to give. And then in 12th grade, introduce mentor and peer leaders. So that's what you get all of the time. A lot of our AP courses are singletons that are up against other singletons, band, choir, art classes, and students have to make difficult choices. So still maintaining 35% of our senior class when the requirement was ended as their freshman year is quite impressive for us.
What would that be five years ago or seven years ago?
Actually fairly consistent. Um, we did lose a little bit with startup and global scholars. Um, the one thing I also lost with the startup of global scholars is a lot of dual-language students. Because I used to have like 15 to 20 dual-language and now I'm down to like three to four a year. Um, that's where I really took a big hit.
Is the um, I don't know what it's called, what it's called, but the, you know, we had that, the seal?
So the seal of my literacy.
Is that um, is that helping?
Um, no, it's not. But it might start to, when it starts to pick, it's actually one of my goals moving forward is how do we get more students involved? And I have a plan for that, um, involved with getting the seal. And we've made, so, so we only started it last year and already we've made some implement, implemented some changes with our pre-AP curriculum so that more students will be almost done with it by the time they enter their AP course.
Mia, we may see a shift in that as well when uh we start phasing in the new graduation requirements. I'll talk about that a bit in the staff report. The state is going to enhance the seals and I think that will become more popular over time.
So.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go back.
Can I just ask a question?
Let me go back.
Have we, have we thought at all about ways that we could try to retain our seniors in the program? Meaning like different types of language classes or different ways of delving in, just different sort of ideas of things?
And dovetailing off of that, what about half a? Is there any way of ever doing like half a year of like a cultural elective or something like that that you could?
Pull our kids back in?
We've considered all of that at some point within the past, you know, 27 years that have been here. Um, the half credit gets tricky because there has to be another course on the other side of that semester that you, a kid doesn't want to have a free period. So that's one thing with when I used to schedule as an assistant principal, I noticed that you, if you have a semester course, you've got to have another one that is appealing to the students so that they don't have that free period because that's what we don't want them to have. So that's a little bit of an issue with semester-long class. We do have two different tracks for seniors. You know, we have the AP track and the non-AP track. Um, we do offer, you know, students who go through. What this data doesn't show is that do we have any seniors who decided to stop going with the upper level and start a new language at Level 2 or Level 3? That's not what this data is showing. So there is that opportunity for students. If you've gotten through a Level 4 of a class, you can, and with success, you can easily jump into a Level 2 class, sometimes a Level 3 class. So there is flexibility like that.
I just wanted to, sorry.
Yeah, no, I have, when Mike McGrath was here years ago, I explored like, do we start doing topics? And, you know, developing classes that are based on relevant topics that are happening right now, the immigrant situation that's going on, movies as relevant films or something. We went through a phase where Spanish films were really all over the place and we were accessing them. Could we do a topics course in that? And then I was thinking about the semester-long classes. One semester it would be movies, the next semester it would be a social issue or something like that. Um, we're not thinking of anything of that right now because we're busy with our curriculum redesign to align with the state standards, but it is something that definitely could be considered.
And I think that's a great idea also, just to, to go back on your idea too. If, if mentor and things like that seem to be reasons that their pull, kids are pulling away, to have a half-year course to counteract, that might help.
So the other thing that, now you got me thinking about what we've done in the past, so no, it's great. And I'm like, wow, I remember all of this, I'm so happy. So we did the linguistics, we have the linguistics course that we started in 6th grade. So kids take the three languages and then they take a linguistics course, which actually teaches them how languages work and the more follow the, more topology of everything. We had two years where we offered that linguistics class at the high school and it was maxed out. Like I put 28 kids in there. Bob DiMartino was like, what are you doing, man? Like, they want to take this class. And it was a really popular class. So that was a semester-long class. We had to do that to go opposite mentor.
Yeah.
So that Bob had a class to teach opposite mentor. So it was a scheduling um help is what it was. But I was left with that feeling like, what do we do with this linguistics if there was such popularity? Could, and then at that time I started thinking about the exploration of language through films and not just concentrating on Spanish films, but you could do movies through translations and do French films and do Italian films and do maybe some non-romance language films. So the thought was there and then.
Love that.
The state changed our standards, COVID, all of that fun stuff happened, so.
Ashley's a kid perfect. She hadn't, she had mentor or something, had to give and her language went. And she felt very badly about it because she enjoyed, you know.
It's a tough decision for kids. And, and every kid, you know, with whatever pattern, you know, if they're an art kid, a music kid, or, you know, AP student, they all have to make these really tough decisions.
We had the same issue last year with, with mentor and having to drop the language. And this, I think part of the issue was that it was only offered one.
Well, it's the singleton, right.
But when you've only got 71 kids, is it worth? You know, it's chicken and egg. Do you, do you offer a second section and see if more kids sign up? Or?
But when you do that, you're taking FTEs and then you're cramming up another level class with multiple, you know, more students. So it's what's best for the whole student body. And those decisions are really hard to make from a scheduling standpoint.
Yeah.
I guess one thing that my kid could be interesting is to find out why there is a fall off, like to ask the kids. Like, you know, and, and is it inevitable just given all the choices? Or is there something that can be done? Because you would think that, and I could be wrong with this, but probably more than 35% of the students are going to need to take language in college. So that continuity is actually quite important. And so if they're not taking it in 12th grade, now they're taking a step back when they go to college. So it's sort of like, it's incongruous in terms of what colleges are looking for and like these statistics. So the question really would be why? And again, maybe it's unavoidable.
And could we pull them back in with exciting new courses? And I would say, also say that guidance is, there's a contradiction because guidance is definitely pushing the kids to take a fourth year of language. That's definitely a message that they're saying. They're saying that colleges really want that fourth year of, of the language. And, you know, yeah, we're struggling to get them to.
The tricky part is colleges may, may want them for freshmen, but are the freshmen taking Level 1 when they get to college to get their requirement out of the way? Like, so.
They're coming in at a.
No, a lot of them placed that, coming in at a disadvantage.
They're coming in at what's considered intermediate.
Like, yeah, Emily didn't have to take it because she had the A's. She placed out, yeah.
So now our, our students are coming in at a disadvantage. But, and I, I really, I'm hard pressed to think that five years ago that we had 35%. It just seemed like everybody continued into the upper levels five or six years ago.
Oh, I didn't have the luck.
I don't know if, the only, I, I don't have that data at the top of my head right now. The only thing I can say is that our department has gone down. We never replaced Bob DiMartino. Um, and as a result of that, we're missing five classes. So that number had to come from somewhere, so I.
So it came only from Italian?
Yeah, oh, well, he did both. He did Spanish and Italian and mentor at some point, so.
But also the classes were lower enrolled, right? At that time, we didn't need to refill that position. It's not like we gave these kids no option. Our population was small.
Are we digress, I'm sorry?
We're thinking about you, thank you for that, thank you. And thank you for thinking about.
It definitely gets me.
That's what we want this to be, is this kind of.
Yeah. I don't think I have any other thoughts. Okay, well, not about this. I have other thoughts, not about that. So um, I, I don't like talking about standardized tests as a beacon for assessment or um acknowledging a student's worth or ability, but I have to say that the AP language exams for French, Spanish, and Italian are really a fantastic measure of a student's proficiency level. Um, they really dive deep into a student's knowledge of vocabulary, grammatical structures, putting it all together in an organized essay, as well as all the different skills, you know, the interpretive mode, the presentational mode, um, the interpersonal mode, as well as um how they apply all of that. So one of the parts is the argumentative essay. So if you imagine that you've got a DBQ, like our students have to do in US um history, where you have three heavily laden text documents that a student has to read. Then they have to listen to a two to three-minute audio in the target language and they get to take notes on that. And then they have to take those four pieces and they're given a prompt and they have to react to those four, using those four pieces of, of, of resources. They have to react and take a position and create this argumentative essay, all in the target language. It's a pretty monumental task and you can see up here the time that they're given um to complete the task. Um, I gave you the French, they have the French instructions, um, but they have a minute to read the task and you can see in your essay what you need to do. You've got 40 minutes to complete this whole piece. Read all the three pieces, listen to the um, the audio twice. You get to listen to it. And then you have your 40 minutes to design your essay and create that. So I want you to keep that in the back of your head because.
They are given the English, right?
They are given the English. So it's funny, one of our tactics is you get one minute to read the directions. The kids go in knowing the directions. They don't even need to waste that minute. They can start looking at the prompt and figuring out what that prompt's asking them and then start looking at the resources to gain themselves the minute. It's a, it's a game of how do you get these minutes? Because everything is completely timed. And the test, you know, it's going to talk about your high level of language proficiency. It's going to incorporate your critical thinking and then it's also going to pull in that intercultural awareness. Now, another aspect of the test is the cultural comparison. And so this is an oral presentation that they have to just create based on the prompt families and communities for this year in 2024, actually last May. Families, communities, and compare their personal practices however they identify with a target culture. So, you know, I'm American, this is what I do for celebrations in my family and I'm going to target Mexico, um, Day of the Dead and what they do. And I'm going to compare those celebrations in an oral presentation. So that has to be two minutes of an oral presentation. They have to create that. So these are really good, rich tasks for someone to demonstrate what they can do in a language. And I don't know if any of you studied a language or speak another language, but if you think about having to do a two to three-minute speech on the fly, they get, you know, 10 minutes to prepare this. It would be hard for us to do that in English, a little bit.
They're all speaking with headphones at the same time.
And they're all speaking with headphones in the same time. They've been testing for three hours. Half of them have to take the AP stat test right after this. So it's like, it's a little bit, like, we wouldn't be able to do that in English um for, if I gave you a random topic that you had to develop and make it organized and synthesized with everything in there. So it's a great, and our kids too fantastic on these exams. So we get them there and there's such a process to get them there and they're just amazing what they can do and how they respond. And I want to talk, take you through that. But I wanted to start with, this is our goal and how do we backwards design that? So at the same time, you know, so good old New York State, and I'm not condemning them, but good old New York State, ACTFOL's taking care of this, AP College Board is taking care of this. It's about 2017, everybody's talking about global competency and New York State hasn't changed their standards since 1996, since probably half of us were in school. So, you know, to 2024, they finally said you have to implement new standards. They started rolling them out and talking about them in 2020, right around COVID. Um, the major shifts were in 1996 and since 1996, we were working under topics. Um, then New York State, um, they changed, well, first of all, the biggest thing they did was change it from languages other than English to go to world languages. So it's officially world languages. I think Jackie Taylor changed us to world languages way before I was even in the department. I was still an assistant principal when she changed it to world languages. So we were way ahead of the game there. Then she changed, then New York State went from topics to themes. Um, and then it was introducing that concept of global competency. They really refined the, the proficiency levels and they aligned with ACTFOL's proficiency levels. They introduced the concept of performance-based assessments. Did away with the regents, well, that was done away with nine years ago. But then they also said that districts had their own local authority to create performance-based assessments to align with proficiency levels. And then they made inclusivity and accessibility another issue. So finally, New York State has been doing this. We luckily were way ahead because we knew what global competency was. We were establishing how to do it in our class, we, in our classes. We also knew the three modes of language learning, the interpretive, the presentational, and the interpersonal. And we were working with that way back in 2016, 2017. We were working on how do we build instructional activities to support that? So we were way ahead of this. They wanted us to roll out in 2024, grade 7, the new curriculum for grade 7. Rerolled out grade 7 and grade 9 in 2023. And now in 2024, this year, we're rolling out grades 8 and 10. So we're ahead of the game with this. What that means for us, luckily, is that allows us time to actually refine what we've been doing because nothing is perfect the first time you roll it out. So we rolled out uh 7 and 9 last year and we're working through the revisions. I'm actually going to focus on talking about grade 9 because that's what I'm currently teaching and I have firsthand experience of what that looks like. Um, another concept I just want to give you an overview about is the difference between skills and knowledge. So on the left side, you got the good old grammar and vocabulary, which is awful to have to learn, but it's the only way that you're going to be able to develop your speaking, writing, listening, and reading skills. We have culture down as a skill because that understanding is a skill that takes time to develop. Um, grammar and vocabulary can be done individually. A student doesn't need to be in class to do that. That's where you get the Duolingo, that's where you get the Khan-Hu-Gamos, that's where you get all of these other online platforms that are just rote practice and memorization. That has to get done. Because without those two concepts, there's no way you can have a spontaneous conversation or write a spontaneous note or engage with text that's being, you know, shown to you or a movie that you're watching. You have to have that recall, quick recall, in order to make that happen. The skills have to, a student really has to have active engagement for those skills because you can't be passive with language. You have to be able to produce it, whether it comes through your lips or whether you're actually writing it. And I say to my kids all the time, if you're not saying it through your mouth, it's not going to stick and you're not going to learn it. You really have to practice out loud and you really have to, just like I prepared for this, you have to write your notes down, not even typing. You have to write them down yourself because that's how you engage with the language. Um, moving forward, I, I think you have all seen this cone of proficiency a million times. Um, and I apologize for the redundancy, but it does align now with what the state has actually done. So the state uses checkpoints, checkpoint A, B, and C for the different levels of proficiency. They've aligned those checkpoints with the cone of proficiency, which talks about our levels. So in the one thing that you need to understand, if you look at checkpoint A, 7th and 8th grade, this takes time and 7th and 8th grade should be in novice, mid, novice, high. That is a range. So if you think about every fifth, five-year-old that enters into kindergarten, they all have different reading abilities, they all have different language abilities. Well, the same thing happens with our students. So 7th and 8th grade, they're going to be in this range from novice, mid, to novice, high. That's our expectation. Will there be some students in novice-low? Absolutely. Will there be some students that are hitting intermediate, mid? Absolutely. But the range, the desire range is where that band is. Same thing for checkpoint B and then same thing for checkpoint C. The state and ACTFOL actually recommend and they say it's expected that it takes two years to get through a checkpoint or a band on that um cone of proficiency. So I just wanted to show you what that looked like so that when I talk about the other things, it makes, the whole picture makes sense. The state, one of the great things that the state actually did is this. And this is just two, I'm showing you two examples of the many examples that they have. So this is the expectations for what a student can actually produce or um interpret at the different levels. So this is for what a student can interpret. I'm focusing on novice, high, intermediate, low because that's actually what the Level 2 curriculum looks like. So I, I apologize for the blurriness here, but if you take a look at intermediate, low, which I'm going to shoot high with my Level 2 students, they can identify a main idea from simple sentences from literary texts and conversations that are spoken, written, or signed. So simple sentences in short informational concepts. So simple sentences in short informational concepts. Hold on to that thought. When you look at what they can actually produce, you're going to see that they can request and provide information with some detail, some detail, by creating simple sentences and asking appropriate follow-up questions. So I want to show you what that looks like from our students' work. But before I do that, how do we get there? This is actually a snap, this is a screenshot of what our Atlas Curriculum Map looks like for our first unit in Level Two. So how did we get here? We started way back when, after our tri-states visit, we started exploring the three modes of language learning and we worked with consultants to figure out how that our instructional practices could align with that. After we understood those, we went into developing a scope and sequence for our seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. So how do we develop a scope and sequence that's actually spiraling? So what they learned in seventh grade, they revisit and learn a little bit more in ninth grade, what they learned in eighth grade, they learn a little bit more and push them a little bit farther in 10th grade. So we developed that spoken, scope and sequence. Each grade, seven, eight, nine, 10, each level, if you will, has three to four units per year in it. And that, I say three to four units because we're in that process of revising. Last year, they had four units in Level Two and my teachers are thinking now that they're revising and looking back at what the students were able to do, they want to bring it back to three units because they want to go deeper and longer with the three units. So that's why I say three to four units. And what each unit entails is, in the top left, you have the language toolbox, that's the fancy name for grammar. You have your structures and patterns. How do you want your students to be sophisticated with their speech? We have really bright kids here and we want them to be sophisticated when they speak whatever language that is. So what are those patterns? What are those transition words that we have to put in there? The vocabulary, it looks like a simple list, but each one of those bullets probably has 15 to 20 terms under it. If you just look at the personal characteristics alone, there's like 20 adjectives that they have to learn there. Then you go into seasons and weather and all those other things. So that's chock full of information. Jumping over to the unit goals, the state has what they call can-do statements. And at the end of your unit, what can your students do? And those are divided by those three modes that I've been talking about, the interpretive, the presentational, and the interpersonal. What can they do with that language? So this is actually the screenshot of Summer of Adventure, which is our first unit for Level Two. And I want to show you what that actually looks like and how we start building it, going from this to a kid can actually produce some language skills. It's kind of fun. So I grabbed one of my students' binders. I said, "Give me your binder. I have to do this presentation and I need to do your student work." I said, "What do you got in here?" We start, it's boring, it's dull, but there is a role and a place for rote memorization and practice. So we start with, oh God, she wrote out the conjugations for all of these verbs in the preterite tense. They had, I think, two to three verbs in the past tense, the preterite tense in eighth grade, and then we jump into ninth grade like, oh, here are all these irregulars you're going to need and here are all these other verbs you're going to have to need and you've got to start practicing them. So they practiced them like this. They have the online platforms such as Khan Hugamos that gives them immediate feedback on how to conjugate these verbs. This has to be done rote because when you move into the next step, which is let's put it into some context and how do you understand those other words in a sentence so that you can conjugate that verb that we gave to you appropriately for the subject of the sentence? That's the next building block. Then what do we do next is, oh, my mother used to do this in high school when she was learning a language, sentence translation. It's so rote and boring, but it's what gets the student to engage with the language at their individual level. So she worked on her conjugations, she applied them in context, and now she's working backwards from Spanish to English. I don't have a copy of our works going from English to Spanish, but that's another place. The other thing that's really great about the work that we do in Level Two and how we teach our kids to be, to have student skills is she corrected everything herself with a red pen. So now she has that visual cue when she goes to prepare for something, what are my strengths? What are my weaknesses? I don't need to look at the stuff that doesn't have red marks on it. I got that. I understand that. I need to focus on where my problems are. This one, I can show you on number four, aterrissar. Students always spell it with the double T. That wasn't her problem. She missed another, she didn't, she had a subject verb issue. So now she knows and she's starting to learn, I have subject verb issues, I don't have spelling issues. And that is really helpful for our kids to move forward and having all this documentation. So we take all this and this is building, this is, you know, different weeks and it's, it is what it is, but we do balance it with other activities that are actually fun. So it's not all pen and paper. You know, we do have kids working in groups, we get them out of their seats, peer revisions, jigsaw-ing, whatever is going to do to motivate them to stay engaged, you know, to help each other learn, to break up the monotony of the pen and paper with what they actually have to do with the information. Likewise, my colleagues are always saying to me, wow, you have so much fun in your language class because you're always doing something hands-on. The hands-on actually has a reason. We, I talked about that cultural comparison that students actually had to talk about understanding a different culture. And when we talk about cultural functions of whether it's a product, a practice of a culture, or a perspective of a culture, how do we get our students here at Byron Hills to understand that when they don't see this culture every day? On the left side, we took a group of students to celebrate the Day of the Dead and we went to the Museo del Barrio in Spanish Harlem and we learned how to, the importance of what is on an ofrenda for the altars that they build for that celebration. We couldn't take all 315 students down there, so we brought that activity back to our classes and we did it in the lecture hall where everyone was going to learn the value of an ofrenda and what it means to the Mexican culture on the particular day of Day of the Dead. In addition, and these are just from the beginning of November, November 1st, so that's why I'm talking about Day of the Dead, it was the most relevant pictures that I had. The burning of the copal on the left side, that's our Level Five classes and that's another ritual that happens at the cemetery to celebrate Day of the Dead. And then the decorating of the sugar skulls, which is another ritual. So now these kids are actually doing these activities, they're learning about it in the target language with the vocabulary associated. So if and when they have to talk about it, comparing themselves or thinking about themselves, they have that knowledge right there. Looks like fun, but there's really meaning behind it. Our Italian and French classes like to go the food route. So on the left side, you have the Italian classes. Last year for Italian Heritage Month, they made pizzelles. So that is a task in and of itself to make them perfect, but what's the recipe? In order to understand a recipe, you have to know commands, which is the grammatical point. You have to know the historical importance of why Italians always do this. And then they actually made enough for the entire student body to give out at lunch. And then the funny piece was with this AP class last year, they were all bakers and the teacher decided to capitalize on that. And every celebration they had, they had to do, they did a bake-off. And where they talked about the recipes, they talked about the historical concepts of the patisserie that they would make. And then they had that question for the cultural comparison, compare a celebration that you have compared to a celebration that the French had. So they had been doing this all year long and they came out, waited their 24 hours to talk to the teacher and said, "You won't believe the question that we had." It was, we were completely prepared for it. So it was fantastic in that end. So we do all of these activities and then what's our final product? And I can only show you what I had from my class because that's the access that I had. So we talked about at that AP level, the students get three different documents. So what I did for, this was just last week, I did this with my students, they were in Summer of Adventure as our unit and the task is write a letter to a friend talking about a trip that you took. Simple enough, except for I get to, I get to control where they went and what they did. So I get to see their language learning. So I, they all got, in practicing leading up to this, they all were assigned a city. They all learned where the city was, the coordinates, northwest, east, south. How do you talk about, is it on the coast? Is it in the mountains? Is it in the north of the country? Is it a capital city? Is it a big city? Is it a small city? Whatever it is, they talked about all of that. And then I gave them a new city that they had never seen before and I chose Coruña in northern Argentina. I gave them the map and I circled it. So that's their one document that they have to justify and they have to talk about where it's located. The next thing I gave you was the weather report. And I said, "So this is what Coruña is like. It's in English." So they now have to translate that to Spanish and talk about the weather in Spanish based on this report that I gave them. And then the last thing I gave them was their cultural piece, which was how do you pick a ticket from a Spanish-speaking airline in Spanish to get to your destination? With this, it's so complicated, I love it. We had to learn numbers. They hadn't learned numbers greater than 100 coming into Level Two. So now we're talking about thousands. The comma and the decimal are different in Spanish. They had to talk about time, military time, and how that works. They had to learn the concept of layover. And although all of our kids have pretty much been on a plane, the concept of a layover didn't exist, but then they had to talk about it in Spanish. So that was fun. So they learned all of this and what I said to them was now with these three documents, talk about the trip you went on. Which flight did you take? What time did it take off? Do the military time? How much did it cost? And what did we get? So we get this writing. This is one of my students' writing. And for you, I don't know if any of you speak Spanish, if you're a native speaker and if you go back to those expectations that the state puts forth for what can this intermediate-low student do and the expectations is, can a native speaker understand their basic ideas? And this check does that. A native speaker would be able to understand this. But what I see when I go back to check my unit plan and those can-do statements is I can talk about numbers and here are the numbers that the student used. And these are numbers that are greater than 100, that all have special spelling issues attached to them. And then leading into the next piece is how do you tell time based on military time? Let's bring it back to regular time because Spanish uses military time for telling schedules, but they don't use it in their writing or their speaking. So they have to do that math and figure it out and write out the number so I know that they know the numbers. Then we have to introduce new vocabulary. So when you go back to that unit plan and no vocabulary associated with the plane, there we go. We've got that. And then the verbs in the preterite tense. What'd you do because it was last summer? And some of this is a mixture of regular and irregular verbs and new vocabulary that they had to learn. Adding another layer on, let's put in those two transitional concepts that really show a native speaker that our students are sophisticated. Upon, our ninth graders are saying upon arrival to the airport. I said to them, I'm like, I know you don't say this in English, but you're going to say it in Spanish. Upon arrival. And then the other one, after arriving at the airport. Our students don't speak like that in English, but they're speaking like that in Spanish and we're really happy about it. And then the last piece is that they now know major cities in Spanish-speaking areas and they can talk about Spanish-speaking airlines or Spanish-run airlines. So if you walked up to a ninth grader that was in my class, you could say, "What's Avi Algun?" And they said, "It's an airline out of Central America." Like they know these things, which is kind of interesting for them to do. So I hope that I've showed you the, a little bit of the process. We do the same thing for Level Three, the same thing for Level Seven, you know, grade seven and grade eight, but this is how we get to it and we look at this data like, are they getting it? What are they not getting? What do they still need to learn? I talk so much.
So what I was jotting down as you were speaking was what strikes me is these research-based instructional approaches to teaching, which is really awesome. You have, there's direct and explicit instruction with vocabulary learning, grammar learning, which is research-based. You have opportunities for social engagement because we know kids learn through social interaction. You have the applying and transfer of knowledge to new situations. Along the way, there's feedback and students reflecting on their work and culminating in a performance-based assessment. And that's these five research-based instructional approaches all within, you know, this cycle of learning over and over.
So, and it, I don't know if it looks like a lot, but this is what we've been working on for the past two, three years, is that curriculum development. So, and then the beauty of this is that French and Italian are doing the same exact thing in Level Two. And so the, for the first time, I, I remember the last time we did curricular revisions, I was pregnant with my son and he's 22 now. So it's been a while and now we're completely aligned, languages and levels and that scope and sequence is there. So it's an exciting time. We are not finished. It is messy and we keep revising. And the good thing that I can say is that the teachers are actually excited about it. And they're really eager to get this work continuing rolling and to see how it pans out. Did our goals, did our plan meet and did our students achieve? And if not, then we revise.
So you said you're not finished, so what is next?
So what is next? So what is next? So a couple of things. We're going to continue to refine our levels one through three. And when I say level one, that's grade seven and eight, so that counts as one. We have to develop a checkpoint assessment. So the state is insisting that we have a checkpoint A assessment. That is for grade eight by the end of this year. We've been doing, I don't know if anybody's heard of the AP Assessment, which is a speaking assessment. We've been doing that as a checkpoint assessment since for the past four years. So we want to expand and elaborate on that to get the other skills involved on that. So our teachers are actually building that right now. And then for next year, we'll devise one for checkpoint B, which would be the end of 10th grade.
Someone said, "Does New York State not have assessments for checkpoint ABC?" But they say that districts-
We have to have them.
We have, okay. So it's up to districts to determine.
So, and they give you choices. You can go to third-party vendors and do that and that's what we've been doing. We've been using a third-party vendor. Oneida, Oneida Herkimer offers a test that they've done that's similar to the Regents' exam. It's, it's fairly costly, costly. It's six to $10 per student to do that. And I'm not sure that that's our best solution. And then anybody who has friends out on Long Island probably has heard of the FLACs exam. Many districts subscribe to the FLACs exam, which is another assessment that's much like the Regents' exam. What I don't like about the FLACs exam is that you can sign up as a member to FLACs for $30 and get access to the test. And I don't feel that there's test security with it, so I don't want to have that as an option. I'm sorry?
You can get access to it before or?
You get it before because they send you the test and they say, "Oh, you have to make your copies for everything." And I am not comfortable with that. So I've never done the FLACs test for that reason alone. It's a decent test, don't get me wrong, but it's, everyone has an access to it. So that's something that we're working on with assessment that we have to move forward with. The second point is increasing, we talked a little bit about the seal of illiteracy and increasing the participation there. The issue with the seal of illiteracy is that they don't get it till they're graduating and our kids want to have it before so that they can use it for college, rightfully so. So we're changing our process now that our pre-AP students are at the end of the first half of their checkpoint C. We're going to be able to have them do their culminating project at the end of pre-AP when they're all taking their AP tests. They can work on this individually with a teacher in the room helping them so that they have that project done, so they just have to present it. And that takes care of a lot of the problems as to why kids aren't doing the seal of illiteracy. It's time-consuming. And when they're second semester seniors, that's the last thing they may want to do. So we're hoping to get that out of the way coming into senior year and then we'll be able to have more participation with that. The other thing with the seal of illiteracy is that it's not just open for our languages that we teach here, it's open for any language and that's the one goal that I want to get. We're such a, we're becoming such a multilingual district that students, if they're biliterate at home with a home language, they can also possibly get the seal of illiteracy in two languages if they're studying one. And then the last one is, we're not afraid of AI. We've had Google Translate forever, so we've been working with concepts of AI and we can immediately tell if a student's using it. But we want to use it for how can it really enhance and benefit our students' practices? You know, we use these online platforms, Khan Hugamos, you know, Extemporia for recording, all of these other things, but AI could really elevate individual student knowledge. You know, you got 20 kids in a class and they're all entering a prompt and getting feedback on what their prompt is from AI. It is individualized feedback that's fairly accurate and where a teacher can just walk around and answer questions and do that in a short period of time. So we'll be looking to explore that moving forward. And that's all I have.
Awesome.
That's it. Thank you.
I actually wanted to say one other thing. First of all, thank you so much. This was incredible.
I hope it really explained how we do things.
I think especially, I was very impressed by your performance-based, that performance-based project and how it synthesized.
Right.
You talked about the grammar and the numbers and I feel like that really shows how you can meet those standards and also do something that's a, you know, puts, synthesizes it all.
Makes it relevant.
Yeah, makes it interesting to kids. So I love that piece of it and my question sort of piggybacks on that. I know that when we delved into the literacy programs, there was a lot of discussion about how, this was for younger kids, but how the brain works and how kids learn and language, it was for the English language, and reading and writing. But do you see any place where that comes into play with foreign languages and sort of new knowledge or world knowledge that's being applied? How kids learn language best? And are there things coming down the pike that could maybe even enhance our kids' language learning in our, in our district?
And just to piggyback on that, just because this is an issue that comes up in the community like time and time again, starting languages earlier, the pros and the cons of elementary school, which is probably the way the brain works, there has been-
Yeah.
Right. So I could go back to our 2009 study to talk about what did we figure out then? And when we had Nina Garrett, you know, from Yale University in to talk about, should we start earlier? Should we be doing other things than the Romance languages? And she said, "The only thing that you're going to get with a younger population is that really expert pronunciation." And it is a problem with our students. Pronunciation is a problem. And I think part of that is from anxiety of not sounding cool or something like that. And I think that's where we could definitely benefit from starting younger. Your question, can you remind?
Yeah, just more about thinking about how kids, so even the kids-
So right.
-are starting now.
So it's funny, I did, I did the time of contact time that we have with students. So we have students for, I have the notes written down, excuse me, one second. We basically, per year, students have 117 hours of language instruction per year. And if you think about that from a workweek aspect, that's three work weeks. So if I went to work every morning like I come to work here and only had to learn French, I get three work weeks, that's what I get per year. So then if you multiply that by the six years we have them, you get 18 weeks of learning a language. Now, I don't know how your professions work, but you don't become an expert in your profession in 18 weeks. So that's what we're doing. And when you look at that AP assessment and I, you know, when I think about that, it's a great test, but it's still a test. They're able to master that in 18 weeks basically of contact with the language. Now, what happens is why we're lucky and why we are able to do that is because we do the Romance languages and they're so similar to like, uh, English. English is actually a little bit more challenging than Romance languages. So a lot of those literacy components transfer. That's why we have students who, you know, if they're a proficient student in Level Two and they want to take a second language, they can easily jump into another Level Two language because they understand the gendered, you know, nouns, they understand what a conjugation is, they just need to know what are the subject pronouns that I've got here and I know I have the subject object pronoun. They just don't know what that vocabulary is. So they jump in quicker. So there is, we're lucky because we do have a literacy program and what they're doing in English is so great down in the elementary schools that that does transfer.
And are we finding that? I know you mentioned Duolingo, which I think is really cool and new and AI. So are we finding that there are technologies that can advance our language programs?
Yes, and that increases a student's vocabulary, but it's only as good as when that student uses it. If they're not practicing it anywhere, it's, it's pointless because they have to have that, that spontaneous thought. And I always say to my students and I, you know, I'm using my Level Two as a, as a reference, it's like, when's the last time you asked a person a question and they took a moment It's like, when's the last time you asked a person a question and they took a moment and actually wrote down the answer to it before they responded? I said, that's not how we operate. So you need to have that spontaneity and you need to have that quick thinking. That's why the rote memorization is, is kind of important for that.
Other questions for Melissa?
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm glad, glad.
It made me synthesize all my thinking too, so, thank you. The department was a great help. I, every day at lunch, I was like, so what do you think about this? And it was really, they were like, can we go to, to talk about it with you? I'm like, no, 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 I'll do this on my own, but um, I do appreciate the time and getting to share with you.
You know, so much.
Melissa, thank, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for, sorry we started late too.
No, that's fine, I'm glad you have questions also, it was a, great to figure all that stuff. Have a wonderful night.
You too, we appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Thanks for your time.
Bye Melissa.
Bye. Okay. Um, moving on to number ten, special report number two. Budget versus actual expenditure analysis, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And ten point, should I do ten point one as well? Kelly? Ten point one as well? Oh, it's the same thing?
Yeah, ten. Okay, it worked, ten worked. All right. So this is my presentation I gave to you last year, was the first time I did it last year, budget versus actual. Um, I think you guys found it pretty helpful, um, so I want to just continue that and that's something we do going forward. I think it's good to share um, this information and just get an understanding of it. So just quickly, a couple of slides, just in review of the budget from last year. Uh, total budget, remember this is twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-nine point seven million dollars. Our top five budget categories, salary benefits, operation and maintenance, special ed and technology, different from last year. You don't see debt service on here because our debt service again is decreasing. One more year and we'll be done with that. Um, so the top five categories are a little different from last year, only difference there. Uh, you know, real quickly, fifty-four percent salaries based on collective bargaining agreements and, and our, and our contracts, employment contracts, our benefits, everything, health insurance, retirement, dental, everything's in that, twenty-five percent operation and maintenance, a little over five percent. You know, our utilities are, are proving in, in maintaining our grounds, um, and our facilities. Special education, a little over four percent. That's everything tuition-based, speech, hearing, OT, PT, uh, services, technology, a little under three percent. Um, obviously everything, you know, repair, support, our software, equipment we purchase for technology purposes, debt service. Kelly, just one quick question, just when I think about allocations, I mean, there's no right or wrong way to do this, but just the benefits of allocating out the salaries and benefits to the different departments. So you really see like cost of special, cost of transportation, do you ever, do you ever do that? Yes, yeah, I, I can do that. It's a little easier when, when you pull out the, the salaries because, you know, like a technology department doesn't have a tremendous amount of salaries of people. So it kind of skews the numbers a little bit. This is more of the nuts and bolts of the department. But yeah, I, I can do that one too. In the future, I could, I can do this way and show the other way, it's not a problem, it's easy. Um, and debt service, obviously our principal interest, remaining on that. And then a little over two percent in BOSIs and our transfers, um, you know, administrative, our, our insurance, legal fees, all those fees. And our, um, our capital improved asset protection plan, that cap plan that we do on a year-to-year basis, it's one point one million dollars. Uh, that we, we're able to do projects. And everything else less than one percent, you know, that includes your building budget, athletics, even transportation, uh, security and, and Tim's button curriculum. Just a, just a snapshot of, of the, of a pie chart of where everybody fits in, again, salary and benefits, you know, like I talk about in the budget process, obviously being on the most, our largest expense, budget and expenditure loss. This is a fun slide, um, so I just, just briefly, an easy way to explain this is, we carry over purchase order, say we have a, a project going in June. We do a purchase order in June, the work gets done in July, the payment takes place in August, okay? The money's from two thousand twenty-three, the purchase order comes into the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and gets spent in twenty-three, twenty-four. And so that expense that was from twenty-two, twenty-three gets paid in twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's why you'll see a larger increase in the next slide. It'll appear as we spent over the budget amount, when in fact it, we didn't. It's just the, the, the purchase order that came over to the next year was spent in the following year, that makes sense?
Right, I remember that, you did that last year too.
I think I explained that good last year.
You did, you did it again this year.
This year might have been.
That's why I know what you're talking about.
Right, yes, so if you look at, it's a wash. Yes, yeah, yes. Accounting, it's a bigger number in this, but you're right, it's a wash because the money's coming from this year, does that make sense?
Yes.
So this is just the purchase orders we carried over from twenty-two, twenty-three into twenty-three, twenty-four. And then the budget transfers that take place during the school year, and then we're transferring the money, purchase orders from twenty-three, twenty-four into our current twenty-four, twenty-five budget, okay? So this is what, this column here is what we budgeted, that ninety-nine point seven million dollars. The second column is our transfers in and out and our purchase orders we bring in, and then what we actually spent in each category. Um, getting to that hundred million dollar uh, number there, uh, for the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So thi- this just shows, and this is where it'll appear as if we overspent the budget. If you look at these last two years, it'll, you'll, you'll say, wow, we're, you know, we overspent. You know, we've definitely tightened our budgeting process, meaning we'd be a little more lean in terms of our surplus. Um, and our budgeting process for the last couple, three years really, um, as, as you can see in these last three years. In the past, it's been a little different, you know, we've had expenditures below our budgeted amount. Not something you want to live on, not something you want to do going forward for the remainder of time. Um, and I'll get into that with the revenues as to why you don't do that. Revenues were excellent, uh, this year. Uh, we got additional tax levy, that additional tax levy is based on split properties. We have properties that are in Pleasantville and Byram, uh, Pleasant and Byram. So we get additional tax levy beyond what we talk about as the maximum out of tax levy, okay? That's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars last year, similar last year, uh, as well. State aid, we didn't get an additional four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars from the state. Uh, a lot of that is, is associated with FEMA money that we're still receiving. Um, we're still in process with FEMA, it's been COVID over three years, uh, but it's still, we have still claims out there that I've been fighting FEMA with, and I'll fight until I die. Um, but we'll, we'll go as far as we can with FEMA, but we did get money last year from FEMA. Uh, increase in pilot, uh, two, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, some of that star money is in there as well. That's why it's, it's not as huge of an increase, it looks, appears to be a huge increase. And then the big increase we got last year in terms of revenue was our other revenue, that's county sales tax and interest. Is most of the interest? A hundred percent, most of it is interest. We, we were very conservative in our budget for interest in twenty-three, twenty-four. We've increased that significantly for this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, not a crazy amount. I think we went from a hundred to, to maybe four hundred, I believe, in terms of what we expect for interest. We're already beyond that four hundred thousand dollars in terms of interest to this, to date. Um, but I believe we earned about one point eight million dollars in interest last year overall. And county sales tax has been excellent, um, I think we budgeted seven twenty-five and we made it around one point two-ish. Um, so county sales tax has been pretty consistent these last three years. Um, so that's something, you know, we can count on hopefully going forward, um, and it's been great in terms of revenue. You always want to budget your revenues, you don't want to, you want to budget low in terms of revenue, right? You don't want to, it's good to have more revenue coming in, but you need to budget appropriately, conservatively, that if it doesn't come in, it doesn't, the county sales tax and interest. Interest rate could change significantly going forward and it may. Um, but that's why we budgeted conservatively on revenue side, okay? Okay, so we, that's what we earned in, in that, so that total amount is ninety-nine point three million dollars. Now, we know we spent a hundred, uh, a hundred point five million dollars, right? The good news is we don't have to dip into a fund balance. When we, when we did our budget, theoretically, we, we, we decide that we need, we're going to use nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in fund balance, really worst-case scenario. And then two point eight million dollars in reserve. Now, we know our total expenses are a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. So I did this morning, a hundred million, excuse me though, uh, dollars. So in order to balance the budget, we need one point two million dollars to balance that budget, right? Budgeted ninety-nine point seven, we spent a hundred point five again, based on that carryover purchase orders and expenses. So we need one point two million dollars to balance the budget, okay, from reserves. Again, we, we, we bet, we budgeted to use two point eight, uh, from reserves over in this column. We only need one point two, which is obviously goodness. So here, here's a comparison in terms of revenues expenditures, again, these last three years, uh, we have used reserves to balance our budget. Obviously something you don't want to do in the past, but if you look back, we've been pretty consistent in terms of our, our, our revenues, uh, being lower than expenditures, which is ideally what you want to do. Other way around, expenditures lower than revenues. Um, these last couple of years, we've been sliding. And, and you know, as we, as we go forward, debt service comes off in, in next year, I'm sorry, in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, we can talk further about that going forward, but that's an opportunity where we can kind of reset our budget, hopefully, in terms of revenues and go forward that way, okay? So in terms of finishing the budget, there's some things you could do with additional money, or in this case, uh, you know, not, not. One second, just to make sure, so if you look at the total expenditures expended, I mean, actually cash that went out the door, compared to original budget, assuming no issues with the timing of when something hits, because sometimes things slide from year to year. But put, if you pull that out, then did we, do we, um, where were we compared to the budget expenditures? Were we right on top of them? Pretty much, yeah, right in line. Right in line. Yeah, we've been pretty lean with our budget these last couple of years. Well, just, just this, come, this past year, just like this past year, we're more, we're right in line. It's really just the timing issue of the, of the, um, purchase order that went into the following year that ended up creating more, more cash expenditures. Got it. So in terms of finishing your budget, you, you obviously want to balance your budget. You want to maintain that four percent fund balance, and again, that's the amount you, you're statutory, uh, statutory allowed to keep in a four percent fund balance. So that's not assigned. You can have four percent of the following year budget aside, not assigned into a reserve, that's undesigned fund balance. That's what we talk about when, when we do reserves. You, you fund EBLR, you know, we still have some employees that are still eligible for compensation for unused sick days, uh, payments upon retirement. So we still have those, uh, that, those funds available. That's a limited people, limited amount of people at this point, and it's specific to the exact amount of those people. If they stay another year, that money obviously increases, okay? You fund your tax surger reserve for the, for the, the twenty-three, twenty-four year, and then, you know, you got an option of, of putting additional funds in the TRS reserve, okay? Which we haven't done in the last couple of years. So, we need, we need, again, we need a one point two million dollars to balance the budget. We needed nine hundred and forty-two thousand, just to balance the budget and two hundred and sixty-one thousand to, to maintain our fund balance at four percent. Now, if we want to decrease our fund balance below four percent, we wouldn't need that two, two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. But that's something I would all, obviously recommend going forward, we maintain that, helps us with our, with our Moody's rating, helps us with we need to borrow. It's, it's something that, it's just, you know, the controller comes out of the report every year about, uh, districts that are in distress. But that's one of the factors too, that we have never been, you know, a designation there, which is a good thing. So where did the one point two come from? We made a, a, a reduction in our assumptions for tax surger claims. We reduced that from fifty percent to thirty-five percent, so that, that freed up some funds for us to utilize. As well as utilizing some of the insurance reserve and about fifty thousand dollars from our unemployer reserve down here at the bottom to get us this two sixty-one. So that's how we got to that one point two million dollars that we needed to balance the budget. Some from insurance, some for a reduction in tax surger reserve, and then unemployer. So here, here's a look at our reserves of balance and where we are. This is where we started out at nine point nine, nineteen point nine million dollars. Again, earned a significant amount of interest, um, and, and the ins and outs of, of the reserves, um, that equals one point four million dollars total. And that's different from the one point two, right? The one point two is to balance the budget, the one point four is to change is in a reserve on a year-to-year basis. Okay, so it leaves our reserves at eighteen point five million dollars coming into July first of this year. Again, earning interest from July until now, still earning interest, um, so that number's going to change. Uh, but that's, that's as of the end, says July first, it's really June thirtieth, uh, two thousand twenty-four, that last column is our final balance. Now, I guess anymore, but the thing we have to remember, which is like very significant, is the capital reserve, which is going down dramatically. Great point, yes. So really and truly, we are at a level of reserves that we haven't been at in a very long time in terms of being skinny. Now, at the end of the day, because the bond's rolling off in two thousand twenty-six, assuming no major changes in state aid, then you could sort of see your way to a place where we can sort of reset the ability to grow some of these reserves. Exactly. If we lose state aid, then it really is a, a serious plan to figure out what to do because things will be more problematic. I guess the, the thing that we probably all need to keep in mind though, is that in two thousand, if, if we don't replenish the reserves reasonably over the course of time, because healthcare becomes a larger and larger percentage of our, of our pleasure every year because it tends to grow more than the tax cap, that's a safe bet. Then we start to like squeeze everything else if we can't utilize these reserves to kind of figure out the balance. So, I mean, I think it's really important to start really thinking about that two thousand twenty-six, like we said, and, and the ability for us to have as much in the way of reserves legally as we can in places that we can reserve, because we can't reserve for, um, for post-retirement healthcare. And we know that's our biggest liability. So that's, that's what I, you know, like my. Yeah, I agree with you. Does that make sense? A hundred percent. And I think we're fortunate because we're, this happened to a lot of districts a couple, three years ago, where they started utilizing their reserves significantly and they made some changes. We're, we're a little, we haven't caught up to that yet. I think we have a great opportunity in twenty-six, twenty-seven when that debt service comes off. Because we can make adjustments whether the budget, you know, whether we keep the budget the same, make a reduction, whatever. But the unknown at this point, like you said, is the state. If that comes off the table, it's a whole new discussion. I think we start over and we rebuild, you know, from within, I think we have to, because that's not going to be just us, that's going to be every district in this area, so. You know, a lot of unknowns at this point, I mean, and all of these, these slide, these retirements and our, the retirement systems and our health insurance and utility costs going forward. Again, a lot of considerations, we don't know at this time. But I mean, I think as a whole, you know, we're getting there, we're utilizing reserves, you don't want to rely on reserves, you know, to maintain a budget, to maintain a school district. But we're utilizing them, I think, in it responsibly, you know, we're not filling a big hole in terms of the budget with our reserves. We're using them to supplement on a year-to-year basis, like. Right, which again, in two, in twenty-six, if we can reset, it's, it, there's a logic to it. If not, then we sort of dig ourselves a little bit into a hole because things will only get worse and not better. You're right, a hundred percent, because you start the year off in it, you start the year off down, right, you're right. 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 So I think in the, in these next couple, three months, we'll know more about foundation aid and then we'll, that's going to be a bigger discussion if that's the case. Hopefully, hopefully it's not, but, okay. This is great, thank you for doing that. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate it, it's great, I'd love to talk about it. And you're still late.
And we appreciate, Kelly said on, on this presentation.
You're still late.
It's very well done, thank you.
Yes, very detailed.
I appreciate it, it's important. I, I agree, I think it's very important.
Thank you for explaining it so clearly also, line by line, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay. So it looks like we're moving on now to number eleven, unfinished business. Board of Education discussion about VHF donor attribution.
Yes, so I'd like to start by thanking the VHF who has pledged one million dollars to our Lights Learning Action. Um, and they understood from the very beginning, the financial picture of eight million dollars in the capital reserve and the nine million dollars that was necessary to do this project. And the one million dollar difference that the district would have to look to operating budgets to compensate for over the course of the next few years. And provided the VHF can live up to that pledge, we're not going to have to look at how the operating budget needs to change in order to take care of these additions. So a huge kudos to the VHF and thank you for all that you're doing. And, and might I mention that, um, you'll see it, um, on another business item after this, um, approval to accept a grant from the VHF. They have not stopped doing their grants in each building at the same time. You'll see that there's a Lego grant for the second grade, um, that's upcoming in, in the board agenda. Um, for all second graders to have Lego communities. This was really started in Jen Rau's class, I mean, it's like, it's unbelievable to see how these kids create all these different communities out of Legos and it becomes an integral part of their curricular projects. And the VHF is funding that for all of the second grade classes. So they have not stopped, uh, looking at ways to support grants, um, and have been fantastic regarding that. So thank you for your continued regular efforts in addition to this big one as well.
Their partnerships.
Yes, huge, huge. Um, and so the VHF wrote a, um, a letter asking about how to, how, how the board feels if the VHF, um, is looking to have attribution for some of the donors. So what do we do, so that the, uh, it encompasses four different requests. Uh, basically, the first request is to create, um, an alumni walkway that would be right in front of the press box and, and walking all the way toward Byron Hills High School, where alumni would be able to buy a brick and have their name put in the brick. Whether they do an actual brick or whether they do some sort of concrete stamping, or remains to be seen, but, um, something along those lines for an alumni walkway. And we do have a lot of space, should the alumni walkway extend its way down to the field on that whole drive down. Um, so there is quite a bit of space and we do have really committed alumni. So that is the first ask, and I think before I go to the other asks, so as not to complicate things, maybe it's good for the board to discuss how you feel about that first ask, um, for the alumni walkway. Does anybody want to weigh in on that?
What would the timing be roughly, just roughly of when you have a brick for, let's say, a senior graduating? I mean, if it's an alum that's already graduated, that doesn't matter, if it's a senior, do you know, do you have a sense?
Could be this year?
Would be like in the, in the spring.
I mean, depending upon how quickly they do this, it could be our graduates from the spring that are having our birthday.
That would be lovely if that could happen.
So they could. That would depend on how big the CEG.
It actually might be a nice class gift. That's a nice gift, yeah.
Yeah, it's a great gift.
That'd be a really nice class gift with all the seniors listed like along the line.
I think we were all in support of it, will we, anybody have any concerns about it?
No, I think it's a wonderful.
That, that I'm very well in support of, I think, you know, as long as they've graduated, I think that's a wonderful.
I think my one thing to say about it though would be, I, I love the idea of it being there like by graduation, that's like a special touch, but not to do it too early in the year. Because I, I think we just want to be sensitive to, for your public school. And there'll be names that are, we, we don't have names anywhere on our campuses, I think this is a big step, I don't think this is a small step. I think that it's, it could be very special for, for families and for students and really nice for sort of like the history of the school, over time. So there's somebody great things about it and.
Well, Rick, for an alumni would not be able to be put down until like the student has graduated.
Oh, well, then that's also.
Yeah, they have to graduate, it's an alumni walk. So it couldn't be until after.
Oh, well, that's.
This year's graduation, it couldn't be put down on the ground until after graduation.
Right, okay, that, that makes, that makes sense then.
So there would be no conflict of interest or.
Then there's not, then that.
And my child is out of the school district, right?
That solves that issue.
Does anyone have any concerns with that portion of their request?
No, as long as it's for graduates, I doubt.
Yep.
I think that's right.
Okay.
I think so too.
All right, okay. So, um, the second request is really about inside Byron Hills High School. And it's about putting signage up in the common hallways, um, in the new, new renovation to include VHF individual and corporate donors. Um, I know that we have had significant conversations, um, at this table, the board has had, about putting names, um, in the school districts, um, in the school district. You know, we have current students walking down a hallway who see their family name, other students don't see their family name. But I wanted to know if there were any questions or discussion about that.
I feel strongly that, that names don't go long in the school. Uh, you know, I think it's, it's more than just the student, it's a student, it's teacher, just. Uh, you know, I think it's, it's more than just the students, the student, it's teacher, just student. Um, it's a, it, it creates an, an optics that I'm not comfortable with.
I agree with that.
Yeah, we have talked extensively about that, it's something that we have.
I agree with that.
Inside, inside the school.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
In separate occasions, talking.
Yes, yes.
It's our new school, we usually have generously donated by the B H E F. I have no problem with those lots still up.
No, no problem at all.
We love, we love their messaging and their, we wanna thank the B H E F.
Yeah, our organizations. But not individual names or corporate names. And we, and we, back when we were talking about the auditorium, and it's a little bit of a different issue, um, but, you know, it was naming something after someone, but there was, you know, extensive discussions, I remember, you know, that vividly, and while there were a lot of reasons to, you know, pro to move forward with it, I think the overwhelming feeling was, public schools are, are different than
Yes.
private schools, universities, hospitals, where obviously everything is named under the sun, and to keep with the atmosphere of just being a place where we're not, um, focused on, you know, differences of affordability between family and all kinds, that it's better not to go this route, even though I understand the practicality of the fact that many donors would love this, and I I get it, I mean, it makes sense, but it just seems like it's a step maybe too.
That's well said, Scott.
I think so too.
I think it could be recognized in the B H E F literature.
Excellent, definitely.
But I think that inside our schools, it should say generously donated by the B H E F, and then the B H E F puts out beautiful literature that they can easily say, we wanna thank Jen Lomia.
And their marketing. Yes.
Yeah, sure, in their marketing material.
Definitely.
Yep.
Which may very well go through us to get to the community, but this is a B H E F piece, yeah, yes.
Great.
Okay, um, the next one, this is actually like a, um, a number two of two, which is outside of the high school, um, corporate banners, fastened fences on the turf fields, um, corporate donors, there's also something there, um, announcements during the games for corporate donors, um.
I would prefer to see our, our athletes, I've seen at other school, our, their athletes, you know, on banners, I would prefer to see.
Like the main term, uh, just the term, our athletes?
No, 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 the pictures of our athletes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All seniors.
Yes, yes, yes.
So have the, have the posters of the seniors.
It would be nice on the sports to see our, yes.
To celebrate the kids.
Yes.
I think this kind of just brings up some similar issues to inside the school, because this, the fields are also an extension of our school. So, even though this may be corporate, there, you know, there might be family names, there could be things that that come up that.
That's true, like I have a business and it's named the Lomia, you know, photography company, and,
If it's your name. Yeah.
And now I'm out, my name is out there, my kids are on the field.
And I just wonder if that makes anybody uncomfortable or.
There could be businesses that were, that are con, some controversial for whatever reason, that.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
Very true.
You don't wanna be in a position where we have to endorsing or not endorsing, making decisions, um.
To be endorsing, right.
There'd be conflicts of interest in that way, yeah.
The board would be put in a position of approving, you know, something like company versus, you know, like a,
Company and, yeah.
C V D company versus a, you know.
Right.
Or political, there's some company that has political connections or.
Political something.
Right, and we can easily, I, I'm, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm very comfortable with generously donated by the B H E F, and in their literature, they can.
Yeah, I'm happy to put the B H E F.
I think their sign should be everywhere.
The B H E F logo, which is number three, really, um, we do have that everywhere, so.
That's an excellent.
Yeah, that could be everywhere.
Yeah, and that makes complete sense.
I think it would be great to have them on the board, on the, you know, on the scoreboard, signs, because they are, they're partners of ours, and they are generously helping us out, please.
And I do like the, um, the disclaimer that the Board of Education will preserve the right to remove any names at its sole discretion.
Yes.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe never have to.
And I mean, I think these are the right issues for the B H F to bring up, because they're doing this unbelievable job trying to, yeah, raise a significant amount of money for this district,
Sure. Unbelievable. Great. Yeah.
And these are pragmatic ways to help in that process, I think we wanna do everything we can in our power to try to be helpful and not obstructive.
Yeah. Supportive, yeah.
But at the end of the day, just trying to protect sort of the integrity of the fact that we want all families to feel very comfortable, and we wanna preserve our schools, um, in in a way that, um, you're not, you know, with the corporate banners, it it changes the the dynamic a little bit, that it just seems like the right answer is, you know, alumni walkway, great, the B H E F logo fabulous,
Yeah.
but on the other stuff, though, I think it's absolutely worthy of discussion, and and worthy of revisiting every so often, um, but it, but just
No, definitely.
given the long history of us around this table, you know, grappling with issues on naming, yeah.
And the B H E F logo, like, even, um, not permanently affixed, but, you know, we have our fields where we could be putting the B H E F, and thanks to the B H E F and anything we want.
Yeah, on the scoreboard.
On the, on the scoreboard, we can be doing it on the board coming down the high school.
We can send them all the announcements.
Yeah, announcements is another way, yeah, so.
I agree with what Scott just said too, it should be an open conversation, this is a huge, huge gift that they're trying to do, and
Yes. Yeah.
and there are other things they come up with, and we can discuss different ways, and, yeah.
We can do other, we can tell the discussion.
Yeah, we should keep the conversation.
Good.
So the conversations continue, I think.
Oh, that's just a good point.
To show them how much we appreciate their partnership.
And yeah.
Yes.
We do.
Is anything else, right, they shouldn't be afraid to share things like this with us, because I think it's, it's worthy of our time, so it's like look through these issues.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very valuable to us.
All right. Great, the district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
Do we need to vote on that?
Uh, yes, we do, I think we're ready to vote on that, so can I have a motion to approve, um,
The alumni walkway.
the alumni walkway on this, the B H E F proposals, as well as, yep, the B H E F recognition plaques, um,
Logo, um.
logo digital, on the digital scoreboard, um, the thank you flashing on the sign, announcements, um.
Announcements. Yep.
This we have that all three, right?
And.
Yeah, number three, yeah.
All three, yeah.
Okay, and that includes as well, I don't know if we talked about this, but that also includes, it says a thank you included on the screen in each school's vest to be open.
Yep, we can do that as well.
So that, that everybody feels comfortable about too, okay, so can I have a motion to approve?
Time. Yep. And for the disclaimer.
Thank you, and for the disclaimer, the B O E would reserve the right to remove any names at its sole discretion. So could I get a motion to approve the aforementioned items?
Second, and thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, B H E F, we so appreciate you.
That's amazing.
Thank you, okay. Um, and now let's move on to number twelve, new business, uh, Board of Education request for athletic advisory input.
Yes, can I pass these down that way? So, the, um, policy committee met, um.
Want me to pass them down?
No, but, but are there extras of it?
I can look up, yeah, I can look online.
Gina has it, they have it online.
Yeah, we have it online.
All right, so, um, the policy committee met, because we do wanna think ahead, even though we are not going to have lights until the, um, fall of twenty twenty six, and then, uh, twenty twenty seven, for, first for the fields, and then for the courts and baseball, softball. Um, we did want a lot of lead time to consider what the policy is going to look like for use of the lights on these fields. So, to that end, the policy committee got together, we reviewed policies of other districts, and what they're doing in their policies, what, we talked about what we think might be a good policy to put together to present to the board. We need feedback on that policy, so we have a really great, um, engine in the district, which is the athletic advisory. It includes some members of the school board, other parents in the community, our athletic leaders, our students, and our athletic administrators. And so the, the policy committee thought, can we give them an ask to help us with the creation of this policy? Um, so this is the ask, this is the actual letter that we would send, um, to the athletic advisory. Uh, the Board of Education, Mr. Walsh and I are calling upon the athletic advisory to help with feedback on district policy for the use of the lights on fields and courts. We anticipate that the two turf fields, I I've already said this, when they will have the lights. We've reviewed policies from the other districts and are starting to craft a policy that suits Byram. We know the effect that the challenge success work has had on the student experience, and we do not intend that our lights on the field will disrupt time for rest, homework, and family. We also recognize that our staff cannot be expected to run a twenty-four hour operation. Please keep that in the forefront of your work as you help us with feedback on a policy. We are hoping that the athletic advisory, with the addition of four additional school community members who are named here, can provide us with the following feedback, and we have five pieces of feedback we're looking for. One, are the projected lighted practices and lighted contest times accurate for the needs of our athletes in our community? Two, how can the student athletes and the student body help to uphold the code of conduct for the evening events, particularly for spectators? Three, what is a good process for determining the names of the fields and courts? We do not name facilities after people, but how do we decide, is it Bobcat Field one, et cetera? Think of how the athletic advisory could develop a process for recommended names to the board and the superintendent. Four, what concerns might the community, oops, excuse me, might have? Please make a list so we can see what the policy is missing, and any other thoughts or ideas. Uh, once that comes back to the board, the board policy committee can continue to work on the policy, and then I know that this Board of Education has asked for the names of all of the community members who live around our fields, and the Board of Education has expressed to me that they would like to, in the spring, invite members of the community to see the projects that we are going to be working on, to talk about the policy that we are trying to roll out, and to involve some community input, which I will do at the board's direction, and with pleasure, yeah.
Thank you.
So the Athletic Advisory Committee met last week, which is part of my board, um, reports, but but the, um, they've been told that this is coming.
Great.
Our next meeting is February twenty seventh, and we've been told that we're gonna be discussing this.
Terrific, great.
Looks great.
Great letter.
All right, thank you. Sounds great, um, okay, so next we have, um, twelve point two, new business, acceptance of B H E F donation for funding of B H E F signature grants, Lego learning tools for three dimensional Lego community builds.
Yes, I mean, I could talk more about it, but I think we've all been in Jen Rouse's class and seen this in action. It is the most interactive, community building piece. Um, we're grateful to the B H E F for their continued support of grants in our schools during a time that they're undertaking such a huge initiative.
I think I saw a preview of it when I was at one of the B H E F.
Gordon, it was fantastic.
How amazing, it looked really, really interesting.
We will have pictures to come.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the B H E F.
So, can it, yes, so can I have a motion to approve twelve point two, acceptance of the B H E F donation for funding for signature grant?
I'm listening.
Second.
And in favor?
With gratitude.
Excellent, thank you, B H E F, once again. Okay, uh, number thirteen, staff reports.
Staff reports.
Yay.
Hooray, well, the first thing that you're going to see in front of you is a thank you to the B H E F. Uh, we are meeting with the B H E F tomorrow, some, most of the B H E F tomorrow night. Um, and we are with gratitude capturing thirty years of B H E F contributions to Byram Hills.
So incredible.
Um, I do remember the day when the B H E F did not exist here, and the changes that have happened in Byram Hills as a result are pretty incredible. Um, if you look at the, uh, oh, Tim, can you actually click here, so we can view what's inside, yeah.
What's this here? God.
Fluff ring, fluff ring.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is beautiful, it's great, fabulous.
Isn't it so nice?
So it starts out, I don't know if you could scroll down, but the, the front of it is, thank you to the B H E F for thirty years of commitment to Byram Hill Schools, um, with a foreword written by me. First, we start with a retrospective on the past five years of grants.
Wow.
If you look at all of those grants, just in five years, five years, I love wiggle while you work, that's the best one. Um, you can go to the next one, we have Lego coding, we have next, math in motion, the outdoor learning patio, which is still so heavily used at Coleman Hill today, um, second grade mindfulness program with the Well Center, which is still happening today. Uh, the sensory pathways, which are awesome at Coleman Hill and at Wampus, you can see the next one. The environmental science enrichment program that took place at the elementary level.
That's awesome.
So good. Um, indoor recess, um, a lot of toys for kids to play with when they have to be inside, and there are large pieces in that big space, which is great. The new Wampus mural that's in the hallway, which really encompasses everything of the town of Armoc as well. I mean, you, you, you can't really see it so much over on the left, but it's really the entire community, um, is a part in there. Um, and then, next, we have the flexible seating for focus learning, which, which started in one classroom, and then the B H E F was insightful and thought we should do it everywhere, so we do have that everywhere, and the wise owl, right? Um, half the story, social media U, which took place at the middle school, teaching kids that social media is not a definition of who you are, it is usually half the story, it's great. Uh, Kim and Angelo and their teachers did a great job writing grants for the Chill and Beyond spaces. These are, there are two spaces in the school that during free time, kids can go to, can sign up and go be together, and, you know, engage with each other in really meaningful play activities, awesome. Um, Shark Tank outdoor activities, this was that empty space at H C C, now we have a recreation courtyard. Um, students have all of these, I mean, ping pong chests, it's just, it's unbelievable, it's fantastic.
That's awesome.
Looks like.
And then, as if that isn't enough, you have the Crittenen Commons, which is not only a multi-use court, but there is also a whole classroom decking behind it, where classes go out and utilize that space as well. Um, you can't really see it as clearly from here, but it seats an entire class. We have Written Out Loud, which is still, what I love about so many of these grants, is that they started and they're continuing. So Written Out Loud still exists in the eighth grade, our teachers have been able to turnkey it, and they've been getting, um, the guy who is in charge of Written Out Loud to come every year, he's still been a guest, um, in in the development of these stories, and they're producing their own books, it's amazing. Uh, Near and Dear To Me Apartment three seventeen, uh, our students with special needs at the high school have a full-fledged apartment where they are learning daily living skills. Um, they have a living room with a fold-out bed, we're learning about laundry, we're learning about food preparation, we're learning about hosting, um, a bunch of different things, and finances, I mean, it encompasses everything that they need for.
Everyone.
Yeah.
They should have that specifically too.
Before you run, um, so.
I don't know how many of your children have boiled pasta without water, but yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, um, I hear that often. Uh, the marketing plan startup funding, and kids going through an entire marketing plan, and setting up an idea through to fruition to an actual startup company, which is incredible, is still in existence, and utilizes people from the community who have been very generous with their time to come and mentor our students in their startup projects. We have startup pitch night, I mean, it really has turned into something pretty fabulous. Science sensors and lab equipment, um, stuff, tools that were just not really available for us for use before, uh, that the B H E F has helped our science department understand the art. I just love the next one, metal casting, we have so many students who are signed up for this metal casting course, um, and it is really like an industrial arts that we haven't had since, I don't know when.
Since industrial arts.
Since industrial arts, right?
I think because of the course I won't find that, right?
Which was a course, and and a crazy skill that people would use, right? And they would learn, and and we kind of lost touch with that, and this brings us back to it, but in in metalworking, it's amazing. I love the pupil core eye tracking glasses, um, this is a great one where they start to look at, there's outward facing camera. Students in science research use it for their progress, but we can also use it for athletics, for choreography, et cetera. Um, take you back to COVID a little bit, but the Education Foundation supported the ViewSonic virtual classrooms that we had at the time, which was pretty amazing. Uh, they also supported the shade sales for outdoor spaces, it's very interesting, but this shade sale is exactly the location of where the outdoor patio is at Coleman Hill. So when you think about generating good ideas, the good idea to have outdoor spaces for our kids during COVID turned into a permanent space in the form of another grant. Um, all district music festival, which is so loved by all of the students in this community when they're coming together. It's like, it may as well be Disney, or it may as well be Great Adventure, because it is an incredible time for kids across grade levels to work together. It is a lot of fun. And then, since nineteen ninety four, these are all of the grants.
Wow, that's a lot.
Um, and these do not include a million Instagrams, which are thirty-five hundred dollars and less. Um, so thank you to the B H E F for the charity, thank you. I have gone to sharing these booklets with them, and.
They haven't seen them?
The, only the head has seen them, the, Sam Kirchner and Jessica Lungriello and Michelle Retagliata have seen them.
Awesome.
Yeah, all right. And next, I had a visit from my predecessor, Dr. Tom McGuire, who this building is named after. He was the Byram Hill Superintendent, uh, who hired me, he was here for twenty-seven years. You should know that the shelf life of a. You should know that the shelf life of a superintendent is three to five years. And he was here for twenty-seven years and I really credit a lot of what took place in Byram Hills and what we are today to all of the work that he did, to the time that he spent in this community. Um, it was really great to see him. Uh, we visited the district office. He was so proud to see all of the historical pieces of all the different schools over time. Uh, we went to the high school. He had not seen any of those renovations. Um, so it was, it was really sweet and I'm grateful to my predecessor for starting what has made Byram Hills great today.
Is he local? Is he, does he still live around here?
Yeah.
He hired you as a teacher.
He hired me as a teacher. He's amazing. Yes. As a matter of fact, they had just installed a lecture hall in the library in the, um, high school. Um, on the day of my interview, on the day of my interview, and he said, um, sorry, but I've double booked myself. I'm supposed to be interviewing you and attending a lecture in the new lecture hall. So would you come? So I got into his car and we went and we listened to a forty-five minute lecture. Then we drove back to his office and talked about it and had the interview. And I remember thinking, if I don't get the job after this photo interview, I'm not really sure. You know, at twenty years old, I was, you know, driving with the superintendent to the left. I was like, this can't be normal.
What an experience. Very memorable.
But really, and so wonderful to see him and share the memories.
So didn't you get to see the new lecture hall, right?
He got to see, yes, he did. He did.
Just relax.
It was really very sweet and I'm so appreciative for all the work you did in this district forming it what it is today. And super special for me to have you come visit. So, and I said I will have to visit anytime. Um, this is interesting, Northwell Health Mental Health Partnerships. I'm so proud of this. Um, I happened to be at a gala that Scott happened to be at for the same thing and I don't know if you want to talk about it.
Well, I will say that you were a star of the show. That, you know, in all seriousness, Jen, because of her role in Northern Westchester on the board for a long time, was previewed in the video that really explained what the hospital is doing and they're really building out this infrastructure for mental health so that school districts like ours will have partners and expertise to, um, for those kids who need services. And I thought you did an extraordinary job just trying to make that story clear.
Thank you.
And then ultimately they raised about three and a half million dollars.
They raised, yeah, they raised more money at that one event than they've raised at any gala for Northern Westchester Hospital.
Wow, that's amazing.
At Northwell and Northwell Health. So I'm so happy about that. Uh, they've raised six out of the seven million dollars necessary to get started. They've already started with all of their educational school programming and its support of schools. And it is in our district already for people to be utilizing and they do expect the brick and mortar facility sometime this spring. So I'm so grateful for a place for our kids to go when they need that extra mental health support that we can offer in a school and an emergency room is not appropriate for, right?
It's so important.
Yep, so it was great. And now for student highlights. So first of all, we had our cum laude induction ceremony, which was so beautiful. Twenty-one high school seniors, just outstanding students, um, all around good people and great academic achievements. What a good night. Um, well, we do have students who were honored at the Italian Heritage Celebration and this happens in October. Uh, the theme is celebrating five hundred years of Giovanna de Verzano. Uh, this was at Somers Middle School and our students, Sophia Giacominia Razani, a sophomore, and T J Guido, a senior, recognized for their achievements. T J was also awarded a scholarship from A S E N D A Co. Um, and Melissa Zapavina and Jenna Iozetti were acknowledged for their dedication to the Italian language and culture. So congratulations to you. That's fantastic. And as you saw, our Italian numbers, I remember a number of years ago us wondering if we should run an Italian program anymore. And now our Italian numbers are so high, right? It just goes to show you, you can't be too hasty too quickly because it definitely has shifted. Um, this is just one of my favorites. Savannah Mathis is advancing to Jean Couture World Finals in Dublin.
Oh.
Amazing.
Absolutely amazing. And her, uh, the, as part of the program, her teacher is, um, slotted to go. She has two teachers. One is paid for by the program and so is Savannah, paid for by the program. And Byram Hills will be sending her other teacher also, um, to receive.
Oh, very nice.
Yeah, really amazing.
Congratulations.
Yep, and look at where the other designers are from. Milan. Hi, I'm from Milan. I'm from Paris. I'm from London, Abu Dhabi, right? Oh, what did you create? Right? So this is, I just.
Armonk.
Right? I just love that, that we are able to participate in this and this takes a lot. You know, Jane Carlin and Amy Minashe do these very unique specialty, um, contests with their students. It takes so much for them to do this. You have no idea how it's going to take to get this dress to Dublin. I mean, of course, their Jean Couture is paying for it, but this is a lot of effort on everyone's part to make sure that our kids can shine. And Savannah Mathis.
It's like the picture doesn't need to.
Yeah, the picture.
It doesn't do it justice.
Oh, it's so beautiful.
It's so intricate. It's so beautiful.
It's really intricate and you can't really tell, but it is made out of cork. The hat is cork and the flowers are cork. And the actual dress is made out of old lace curtains.
How fabulous.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, so cool.
Yeah. She's a fantastic artist and is going to go to veterinary school, right?
That's her dream.
Oh, wow. Multi-talented.
I thought it would be, I thought I would hear about SCAB, but anyway, it's okay to have lots of talents.
Oh, yeah.
It's fab, fabulous, phenomenal era.
Bio, I think biomechanical engineering.
Oh, yeah.
Good for.
Oh, yeah, biomechanical engineering. That's right. And then we have Liam Porter, recognized by the College Board for Academic Excellence. Congratulations to Liam. Our cast and crew of cabaret. I took my husband. How great was that? It was fantastic. I loved it. The singing was great, the camaraderie of the group. Um, I happened to be talking to a parent recently who was a sports parent herself when she was in college. She played division one sports. And she said, you know, it's interesting because my child is in cabaret and I was a sports student and this child is, is more theater arts, but I see how it's just like a team and it's pretty amazing how it's just like a team. And I, I just loved hearing that because I, I believe this group is a team.
It's a community.
They're really great. Yeah, really great. They had such a fun time together.
They really are very, very supportive of each other.
And it was so, I mean, some of the voices, yeah, your son was in a nice duet. Beautiful. All right, twelfth grade global scholars, Visit Wampus. Awesome. Tim, do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Sure, I have some slides on it, but I'll skip that now. But I do want to say this was, um, a partnership between Jen Layden and Megan McCully, our K five curriculum chair. Um, where we had the election coming up and there was an opportunity, uh, to talk about civics education and that's been a real focus of our social studies department. You've heard me talk about civics. And so the teachers at Wampus were interested. This is fifth grade. So Jen Layden had the seniors and global scholars develop lessons to go down and teach students about civic engagement. Um, and it was just a great day of learning and the kids came down and now that we have sixty-four minute periods at the high school, they were able to do it during their class periods. So they weren't taken out of class. Um, cause you know, students and seniors don't like to miss class at this point. So they went down, the kids were really engaged. They developed activities. They talked about what it means to be a good citizen. Um, and their students had a lot of fun. And then afterwards, the teachers were talking about how they can expand it next year. So they just get these ideas that really connect. Our younger students love seeing the older students. Those partnerships, we have so many across the district. And it really, these kids are role models to these young kids and seeing them in an academic way, um, coming down and working with them, I think is really powerful for the students. It's terrific.
There was something on, I don't know what it was on, TikTok or something I'm not on, but somebody showed it to me and it was a graduation. They had the seniors on one end of the field and the kindergarten kids on the other and they, so they handed something off to them or whatever. They feed in the middle, right? Which was great. And, and everybody was like, oh, why don't we do that? And I'm, all I'm thinking is that these kindergarten kids are gonna be terrified, right? They're, and we're not gonna be able to find them when the whole thing is over, like two hundred kids, like we can't do that. But this is where we do that really meaningful work, right? I think it's great as much as all the spots. It's like, you know, being mentored by an older kid, you know, learning about what's important in the world from, from a kid in your school district, feeling like part of a Byram Hill school community.
And it's authentic. It's around something that's really happening. Kids are asking about it. Once I was in a classroom during this time and they were talking about the Electoral College, um, and teaching about it. One fifth grade kid raises their hand and says, uh, what are the swing states and how many?
That's great.
Hearing this information, I mean, probably they're far of their, you know, and their parents are driving. It's a great question.
It was interesting to see how the kids at, at all the different ages were very engaged to what was going on.
Yeah, it really is nice.
That's great. Thanks, Tim.
Good collaboration.
And High School Music Guild Junior. I went to that without my husband on Saturday. But, um, congratulations to that class. It was absolutely outstanding. And just like what happened with global scholars going down to Wampus Elementary School, we had our high school students who were in the thespian society who were taking part backstage with these kids, really helping to run the program for him, for them. And it was awesome. They really looked up to them and our kids, our high school kids loved it as much as the younger kids did. It's really like such a good opportunity to, to create these up and coming stars. They were so good. And I love, like Kelly, there are a lot of kids that you're gonna recognize here, like the upper hands side. Like these are a lot of the COVID kids, right?
The COVID kindergarteners.
They're COVID first, they were COVID first graders, yeah. But we were seeing them, you know, and it was nice for me to see them just, you know.
You were letting them out of the cars if I remember, right?
Oh, my God, yeah. All right, wow, this is part one. So first we had Jenna Kleinerman and Catherine Shield for winning the section one doubles championship. They are amazing, absolutely amazing. Congratulations to both of you. And then, ta-da, one more time.
I saw there are places for them to put their name on. God, I saw.
We, they won states in twenty-one and twenty-two and now in twenty-four.
So exciting.
Um, a four to one victory. I, I have to say like what, what an absolute incredible team. And thank you to all of the tennis players who were not actually playing at the time, who described for me what's happening and tell me how many points people need before we can win. But, you know, there, there was that point where we had a bunch of doubles who were playing and this group won and this group won. And if this group doesn't win, then it all falls on Jenna, who's doing a singles match. Like, I mean, it, it really is so incredibly intense. Um, and it, it didn't have to fall on Jenna this year. It did fall on her another year that they became state champions and, you know.
It's really incredible because statistically, this is.
Crazy.
Three years now.
Really, like, yeah, to, to win three out of four years.
These aren't the kids who were here in that first year.
They're not the same kids. That's, that's, like, it's not the same kids.
It was a couple.
It's a great, it's every program, right?
Yeah. And they, they were maybe not even playing in that time period, right? So it was just fantastic.
Different coach? No, different coach.
A different coach.
We have a lot of talent.
It's just a few years. It's been the same coach, right?
So we also had the, um, all of the members, thank you to Scott Saunders and, and Rob Castagna, to Brett, to, um, getting everybody organized with the police department, the fire department, the ambulance corps. They came in, right? Tim and I were like, it, it was like, it can make you cry, right? It was like all of these vehicles.
The parade, yeah.
Ten vehicles.
And then our small bus.
Right.
They rolled in, yes.
Susan and I were in my office and we heard that. We were like, oh my God, is there a fire?
I mean, it was really, thank you so much to the community, um, for expending, you know, all of your resources to congratulate our girls and take them. We will be having a pizza party on Wednesday and I will ask the girls if they would like to have their own parade or be a float in the Bobcat Parade. This is what we've offered to each of the, all the years that they were having won this. Uh, because we like to go with what the girls want to do and, and not with the district wants. So we will be asking them.
You know, Bobcat was like the Frosty Parade or?
In the Frosty Parade, yeah. So we'll see which, whatever they prefer.
Probably, please come out.
I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next, yeah, a couple of weeks.
Yeah. So we'll see what they desire and we will be there and I will carry a smaller drum. Rob Castagna had to rescue me.
That was a good one.
My heavy joke. And that's it. Go Bobcat.
Nice.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, and. And I also have, hold on, one other thing. Uh, just a reminder to the board that next Tuesday night, we are having the board retreat, starting here at six o'clock.
Thank you.
I have a few updates. Um, first, the, the photo, uh, the picture up here by our students. I want to commend our Wampus art teachers. Every year they're doing this now, these self portraits. Last year was, um.
It's so good. Looks just like Tim Burton.
It was based on self portraits. Yeah, that, yeah, that's what this, it was, it was different last year. It was based on the screen photo. This year they're doing Tim Burton, the art of Tim Burton.
That's amazing.
This is, um, looks like Luke in grade four. So I love these, um, every year and they're amazing. So you'll see these, um, recurring throughout my presentations this year. So I'm gonna talk about four things. Um, the graduation measures, I'm gonna give you a more detailed update this time because last week the Board of Regents met and, um, had a presentation on rolling out the timeline. So I'm gonna give you that information. We'll talk about the student board member as officio, which will go into effect starting July one, um, which is a requirement, a new law. And then, um, the civics lesson Jen spoke about. I'll have a few more pictures and then I'll give you a, a data update on the A P Honorable. So first, um, I talked last month about the graduation measures, which was high level. We didn't know the details yet. We were anticipating it. This is information that came out of the state's Blue Ribbon Commission that studied graduation measures for a few years. There's basically four transformations, Portrait of a Graduate, Redefining Credits, Sunsetting the Diploma Assessment Requirements. We'll talk in more detail about that. And then moving to one diploma. So the Portrait of a Graduate, if you remember, are the seven different slices of a pie, um, which will, um, students will need to demonstrate proficiency in each of those seven elements in order to graduate. So I get into some details. This was released, um, last Monday at the Board of Regents meeting. There's basically four phases. Um, we're in the first phase, which is a planning year. Then there's going to be an initial phase starting next fall for two years, then the initial implementation starting in fall twenty-seven and then full implementation and scaling up in fall twenty-twenty-nine. Let me get into the details of what this looks like. So this is an overall timeline of the state rolling out various actions and initiatives. Um, so I put S Y here. This is the school year. Um, the next slide will be a little different and I'll talk about that. So this is from the rollout. They're gonna finalize this year the Portrait of a Graduate. And they have this also, this requirement of major life events not affecting graduation. They're gonna release next year some details about the new credit requirement. Remember, right now we're on Carnegie Unit system. Students need to have twenty-two credits to graduate high school. Um, it's based on seat time and courses and the various requirements like three years of math, four years of English, et cetera. And they're gonna roll out a new credit. I don't know, I have no idea what that one's like yet. Um, in twenty-twenty-six, this surprised me. I did not hear this in the initial discussions, but they're going to reformat the learning standards again. Oh, come on. Scott, I did not, this was completely a shock to me. I've not heard any talk of this. And wait till you get, and wait till I get to the end, um, so there's more. Um, they're gonna release the Portrait of a Graduate rubric. Each of those seven slices of the pie in the Portrait of a Graduate will have a rubric associated with it that students will have to, um, demonstrate proficiency in each of those areas. And that'll be what we evaluate students on. Um, and then they're requiring financial literacy and climate education, also something I did not hear about previously. And that has to, that will be rolled out, that requirement.
Interesting, but the financial.
I didn't know.
Don't say apes does a great job.
I don't know. I just haven't heard a thing about this, so this is new. Um, hopefully we'll get some information soon if the criteria, if the requirement starts in twenty-twenty-six. That's when the requirement starts. So it's two years to plan for it. So to me, that's not a long.
Yeah, that's not long, that's not far, right?
No, that's not a long time. Um, twenty-twenty-seven, they're moving to one diploma. They're sunsetting that link between assessments and graduation. In other words, you don't have to take the Regents exams to graduate. They're decoupling those. It can be an option, but there are other options as well, different pathways. Redefining seals. So this is where they're going to redefine, uh, what the seals are. We were talking a little bit about that with Melissa this evening. And then finalizing the rubrics, um, and reformatting the learning standards. Then, um, in twenty-twenty-eight, um, they're looking at best practices for these elements that they're releasing. And then in twenty-twenty-nine, they're providing us with a one statewide transcript. So somehow they're streamlining what the transcript is going to look like and aligned to the Portrait of a Graduate.
Does that mean they force high schools to have a certain transcript?
I believe so. That's how I'm reading that. Again, I don't know, cause I haven't seen the details and guidance behind each of these elements yet, but based on.
They have until twenty-twenty-nine to figure out what they're mandating in the transcript.
Exactly. That's what I believe it is because it has to be aligned to the Portrait of a Graduate and their new credit system. So somehow they're gonna say, remember there's one.
So we can't be alpha numeric and somebody, something else.
Maybe, I don't know if it's that or if it's just how, what we have to record on the transcript. So for example, right now, some districts put Regents exams on a transcript, some don't. That will be a requirement. Cause remember, there's gonna be one diploma now in a standard. Uh, local school districts can't add, require additional, um, additional things for graduation like we currently do, like we have internship, you have. like we currently do, like we have internship, you have, students have to do to graduate. We require first aid, uh, we require two years of world language. These are additional credits. Now, New York is saying, um, no, if a student meets the New York State, um, graduation requirements, we have to grant a diploma. It's no longer a, the district or the principal principal.
Can you have any sort of, uh, a local diploma concept in over, over and above what the state has?
No, not that I, not the way I'm reading this now, no, that's not how I'm reading it now. And then this, Scott, um, to go along with the theme of the new learning standards.
So you, this is interesting, because on the one hand, it gives you more local flexibility from the standpoint of you, you, you don't have as many requirements,
Right.
which one can deem to be good or bad.
Right.
But, uh, but on the other hand, when you really look at this, it could actually be, um, almost standardizing the education more than it has been in the past.
How does, how does the district differentiate itself?
Well, and how's the district compare itself to other districts, which I think is an important thing that we all need to do, right?
With the new assessments, which are probably just like the reg.
Yes, and then.
Exactly, good way. They're just not gonna call it regents, they'll call it.
New assessments, they're just finished, we're still rolling out the new Regents exams in science, we're not even finished with that process
We need it.
Yeah.
and now they're announcing new assessments again, so this, I think in like twenty years, I don't, not, I'd have to count how many iterations of assessments there has been in twenty years.
Do you think the Regents would, would kind of talk twice about this?
We, Fran Wills, who is a Regent, comes to almost all of our lower Hudson meetings and has conversations with us about this, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot in here.
That's the child behind this, well, I mean, when something's not broken, why are we going out of our way to fix something that's been working for umpteen years?
Maybe it doesn't work for every district though.
Yeah.
I think from the state.
I'm sure.
Well, there's this and then there's also regionalization that is the other big piece, um, that is a hot topic of discussion.
Right, so I think there's the states making a statewide change, because it's maybe not working as a state and a system. It's working in these local districts, but they're trying to, to change it a bit, so, um, I'll get to more in a moment. So now, this is looking at the requirements by cohort. So a cohort is defined as the grade in which students enter ninth grade. So for example, um, our current seniors, um, entered ninth grade, I have to look at my cheat sheet, um, in twenty-twenty-one. So our current seniors are the twenty-twenty-one cohort, our current freshmen are the twenty-twenty-four cohort. So to give you a little perspective, if you're thinking of your own children, what this impacts. So for example, our current tenth graders will still have the current local, the current diploma requirements. There's no changes there for our current tenth grade, eleventh or twelfth grade. Students then coming up from there will have changes. So our current seventh, eighth and ninth will have some changes. They're gonna have one diploma now, they'll have the, the current existing credit system. And then the diploma, uh, the assessment requirement will be decoupled in the fall of twenty-twenty-seven, so it won't affect those students. So the only real change for these students is the one diploma for students in seventh, eighth and ninth. For students in fifth and sixth grade, which is the cohort twenty-twenty-seven and cohort twenty-twenty-eight, um, will also have the one diploma, a new credit requirement, so they will be the first impacted by the new credit system. And they will be the first to be impacted by the sunsetting the diploma or the assessment requirement to receive a diploma. That's our current fifth and sixth. Current fourth grade then, the whole system will be in place. So this is really targeting our twenty-twenty-nine cohort, which is our existing fourth grade students.
We think this is an actual timeline or just a sort of predicted?
This is what was presented to the Board of Regents and what the state is now working on, what the, what they had talked about.
Is there a possibility they could kick his years or?
Yeah, as a lot that the state has done, sometimes they will extend things if there is feedback from the field that we're not ready for some of these elements. So we'll see in the next two years if they start moving things around or if they're really on schedule. Um, it's a lo, it's, it's not as long as I would hope for, but at least it's not in, you know, let's say, targeting our current ninth graders or something, so there's a little bit of time. I was hoping for maybe ten years, um, to really develop a systematic change.
So we want to take these, the Regents assessments.
Well, some they still will, because there's some federal requirement, right?
Some students. We still have to have, yes, it's still a federal requirement.
For now. That could change.
That high schools have to assess in each of the core content areas.
So is it English, math and science?
Um, English, math and science and social studies.
Social studies.
And social studies. Also you have to assess once at the elementary level and once in middle school in math and science.
But we'll still have APs, like our kids will still have ways of.
Yeah, so we'll be creating other types of pathways aligned to the Portrait of a Graduate. So there could be learning experiences like, it could be capstone projects. Like if you think of, um, some of the things that our students do with global scholars probably aligns to some of those elements of the Portrait of a Graduate, like civics education, global competency, communication. So we will have these state rubrics that we can now assess our students on some of these projects that they engage in and that's how they will accumulate credits. That's how we're envisioning it now, but could be.
I'm just thinking in terms of colleges, we're having, we're struggling with colleges now getting so many more applications because of the Common App than they can possibly get through in an application cycle. And now we're taking away their ability to assess these kids, 'cause they are not gonna sit, they don't have the time to recap stone projects.
Right, so it's gonna be our, how we demonstrate that to colleges is something we're gonna have to talk about.
And I'm wondering if it's gonna refocus more attention back onto ACTs, ACTs, ACTs.
ACTs, I, I take it, I think it absolutely will.
They, they.
They have to, they have to have a way of.
I think that is an untended but absolute consequence and, um, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, so to do that, so, um, I'll get to something in a moment. I think when we ask why is the state doing this, this is sort of their argument. Is equipping students with the skills and knowledge they need to, to succeed in the, the current, uh, global world. And that students will be proficient in the learning standards and the components of the Portrait of a Graduate, engaging interdisciplinary, real-world, uh, learning and having multiple ways that they can show evidence of their learning. So that's their rationale for this.
Which it feels like we're doing so many of these things already, right?
We are, and that's, I feel like we are set up to do this, so, because, um, I'm talking with Chris Walsh about ways we might envision this.
Yes.
There's a lot we have in place, so, um, what I'm doing with that is I'm convening a study team, um, putting that together now so that it'll start with me and Chris, we involve Kim Lappel, because we do, the middle schools that feed her into that. We'll involve Christina Wilson, of course, and Colleen O'Connor is for special services, just making sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students. That'll be our core team for this year as we start grappling with what are the elements we need to start figuring out and who are other people we need to bring in and maybe create some subgroups. So we're gonna start this conversation now and start mapping out some of the things we need to be thinking about. Um, and then as more information comes, we'll bring that to the study team and we'll start dispersing that to subcommittees. So I wanna really be ready and sort of ahead of this as information comes up. It's, it's overwhelming, it's, it's a lot of change.
Great.
And we have to really be on top of talking to our faculty, talking to our community and talking to our students about it.
Seems like it's a lot of change, uh, one, you know, to change the learning standards as well, like, I'm just not sure why there would be more of an incremental approach.
I know.
So much. Yeah.
Well, maybe they'll come up with that, maybe that will be one of the conclusions as they go through.
Do they have s- schools that they're looking to, like are they looking to Byron Hills as a leader, are they looking to?
Not that we know of.
Are they looking at Stuyvesant as a leader, like who, who are they looking to as leaders that other schools can, you know, learn from?
They definitely don't.
The one model was through, um, the Blue Ribbon Commission had the, they, they look at the performance assessments. Remember that, um, meeting we went to?
Yeah.
Where they have been looking at some model schools who have been engaging in performance-based assessments over the past, it's been several years, three to four years, and they demonstrated some models of that. So they do have some models of pieces of this, um.
The crazy thing that we learned is that when those kids go to college, there was no distinguishing factor for them, right?
Well, with the, the, the whole entire school is predicated on performance-based assessments, so you would never really sit down and take a traditional exam.
Yeah.
So for math, you would actually, I would come in front of you and you would interview me and I would have to defend, you know, my math knowledge, and there's a place for that, right? There's definitely a place for that.
It's amazing.
But, at the end of the day, in many, many colleges still today, there are traditional exams.
Right.
And, and, and to sit for the ACT and SAT, you need to have a certain level of base skills and test-taking skills. And we asked about the SAT and ACT and the response back was our kids generally don't take those exams 'cause there are a lot of colleges that are, that are optional, but we all know that now those requirements are coming back because colleges have found that they're one of the best predictors of success in college, right?
Yeah.
So, so I think that the, what I walked away saying, this is great for a portion of your school day, which we have. And that's, that's science research, that's, um, global scholars, that's startup, but, but to have it to be a hundred percent of your day, I'm not sure would prepare you in a, with a.
I'm concerned, I, 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 I hope that our leaders are going back and telling them, I'm con, I'm concerned because I see, my daughters went to very highly-acieved colleges and kids outside of our area are not doing well there. And then it affects their mental health, it affects every, like, it completely cascades down. And I'm afraid we're not gonna have the rigor that we've worked so hard to create for our kids.
Yeah, the very first thing Chris and Jen and I spoke about when we sat down before the details came out, when we looked at the initial information last month was, as we roll this out, we have to maintain the rigor of Byron Hills, um, at the same time, so we can't lose sight of what is working for our students.
Yeah.
So when we look at this, I always look for where are there opportunities?
And there could be opportunities.
And, and how can we balance this with our, with our current programs and anything new we put in? So we're, that's why I think it's really important, we start really thinking about what do we wanna hold on to and where might there be some opportunities to grow.
They're not the same.
They're not the good way to look at it, right?
They're still gonna have to take EPs, they're still gonna have to take certain assessments.
Yeah, that's right, we look at it, yeah.
Yep.
True.
They're not looking to get rid of the state, the state tests at the awareness level, right?
That they can't because of federal rules.
No. Yeah, it's still a federal law.
Okay.
Unless the federal changes, then they'll be rid of it.
So that's that piece, so, yeah, I'll keep you updated as we.
When there's.
Thank you for that, it's amazing. It's a lot of information, yeah.
They made a mention and then.
Um, one more other big piece of news was, um, we know that Governor Hochul signed a law regarding high school students' participation on school boards, which takes effect July one. So we have to start thinking about procedures for that and here are the details we, I'll give you some of the details. Um, we have to develop procedures for at least one high school student as an ex officio member of the school board. Uh, purpose is to provide students with real knowledge and skills of civics education and civics engagement, which I think that intention is.
Oh, they're not starting till next year.
Starting in July one, we'll have to have this in place.
So we will have to have a kid here at the U of R?
Yes, at least one.
Wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we'll decide that. Um, a few things about it, they'll be entitled to sit with the board members at all public meetings, so we'll have to squeeze in here and make room for whoever is joining. Uh, they, they may, they may be permitted to participate in other Board of Education activities and responsibilities at the board's discretion. They will not be allowed to attend executive sessions or other meetings or hearings not open to the public. Um, and they will not receive any compensation, so sorry about that.
Oh, they don't get what we get?
More chocolate, he asks chocolate, come on, we're welcome to our chocolate.
Whole chocolate.
They want one, they gotta be careful.
They have to have a fair amount.
Same compensation we get.
Exactly.
Piece of double, let's give them double.
And they are not entitled to vote as a member of the school board, so.
Aren't they gonna be picked?
So here's, um, the options that we're grabbing.
They'll see the vote.
It's a question.
Good lead in.
So we are working with Mr. Walsh now to think about what seems best and fair and has a strong system. Um, so students have to have attended the high school for at least one year prior to their appointment, which means it can't be a freshman, um, or someone who transfers in and that have to wait a year. And students are chosen in at least one of the following ways. It could be a duly-elected student president of the high school government, um, a duly-elected by the student body, selected by the high school student government, could select someone. It could be selected by the high school principal, it could be selected by the superintendent or selected by a majority vote of the school board.
I don't like the last three.
I like the students.
I know.
Yeah, so.
And that is, I agree.
We are currently collaborating with, with Chris, um, and we'll make a recommendation at the January fourteenth. We'll put together, uh, an outline and eventually this may end up coming to the policy committee if we wanna make up a regulation in our, um, in our policy, um, handbook, so. Yeah, I think in initial conversations we've had with Chris, we just now have a student, elected student government, which was a requirement this year, so, um, that is an active group that we're decided to engage with. Chris is having good meetings with them, his initial thinking is it would be something that grows out of that. So we're gonna, I have.
That'd be good to get his opinion, right?
Yeah, so we're gonna have this conversation and then he'll be here in January for a budget presentation and we'll, um, talk a little bit about this as well at that time and come up with a recommendation.
Same.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Tim.
Yeah, oh, just two more quick things, we talked about the civics lesson, again, I wanna thank Jen Layton and Megan McCully for working on that. And one more thing is AP, we were recognized as AP Honorable at the Platinum Level. Platinum is the highest level, only seven percent of eligible schools receive the Platinum Level and here's the criteria. So you have to have eighty percent more of your students, um, taking at least one AP exam, we have eighty-nine. You have to have fifty percent or more of the graduating cohort scored eighty-three or higher, we have eighty-three percent, so well above fifty. And fifteen percent or more graduating who took five or more APs, we have thirty-nine percent who took five or more APs.
That's incredible.
So, um, congratulations to our high school, that's.
Sam, right, great job.
And that's it, and it's our graduating class next year again.
Graduating. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, I mean.
And that was awesome. Appreciate that.
Thanks, let me give over to Kelly, there you go.
Lot of information. Thank you, and Kelly?
Yep.
Yep.
That was a really, really, really quick, just a quick update on the project, oh, I typed the wrong number, shoot.
Fifty-three, yeah.
Numbers are, not my specialty.
I have to.
Alright, just quickly, uh, Tim, still, still, Tim, just, uh, using this space at the lecture hall, um, mentor, is it mentor?
So excited.
That looks great.
Um, this was startup, this is a meeting with their mentor meeting, so these are parents, um, in our community, meeting with our startup students.
Startup. Just utilizing this space, they're spread out.
Was amazing.
So they're using it and then it's going, right?
That's great.
We have four or five groups in there and it was, it just functioned so well, wasn't too loud, they were all talking.
It was a full class, it was like twenty kids or twenty five kids, so.
Yeah, it's so neat.
I took this picture eight hours ago, so this is updated as far as it can be. So these are the meeting rooms right here, they've already sheetrocked them, the ceiling's going up already. Um, so that base is coming up.
That's the library space?
Yes, yep, this is the other side, these are the three meeting rooms along the hallway, you can see they're, they're boxed out and ready to go, so they're working there right now, and this is the main hallway down the library. Um, so, as you can see, our company, the companies, our vendors are doing, are, are really, really great work and getting things done quickly. We're at, we're, should say we're on schedule, we're gonna try to stay that way, um, so. In terms of this week, they're gonna finish it up that, finish up some of the ceilings, the HVAC work, they're gonna self-level the, the floor, the whole floor, so that's a couple, three days, uh, that's gonna be Friday all the way to Monday. Um, so once that's done, nice and level, no problems, and when we start building the stairs in the back, you know, the levels in the back, um, and then we'll go further, but everything's, uh, good so far and just wanted to give you that quick update.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, that's great.
True.
Thanks for those photos. Great, um, you don't have anything, Gina, right? And board reports, um, item fourteen, I don't have any, does anybody have any board reports?
Yep, um, so we had the Athletic Advisory Committee this past week and we talked about the Positive Coaching Alliance speaker that came to speak, um.
He was good.
I heard, yeah, they said the, that the feedback was fantastic, but the attendance was not great
She's glad.
and we talked about why and some of the, some of the things that could have impacted attendance and we could do better next time. Um, we also talked about the fact that the, the topic is not necessarily sports-specific. And it was really about how parents interact with, with their athletes, but it doesn't have to be just with athletes, right?
Yep.
It really could be applicable to a much larger audience than just sports. So that was really interesting, we talked about the, um, Policy Committee coming to them with, um, Lights Learning Action to review the, the policy. Uh, we talked about the Inside Out Initiative and how winning is a byproduct and not necessarily the goal. Um, also had the PTSA Board Meeting this past week.
Yeah.
They had some really successful Halloween events, they have.
So many.
Spirit wear sales that have been going on, uh, also to note that they have pledged to dedicate ten percent of the lights to, of their, um, fundraising from the spirit wear sales to Lights Learning Action.
Woo, that's so nice, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much for the PTSA, that's great.
Thank you.
Um, and it's, it's been going so well that they may do another, a, a second sale in the spring and, um.
That's it.
They're amazing.
Thank you. Yep, we appreciate them as well. Anyone else have any board reports?
Nope.
Okay.
Do you want a report about when we met with Shelley Mayer, was that?
Oh, I think we.
Did we?
Did we?
At the last meeting, yeah. We did, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
It was? You did, yeah.
You know, it all kind of blends together.
Let somebody remember us, okay. Um, fourteen point three, topics for future agendas, requests for information. No, I don't. Okay, uh, fifteen, communications to the board, I think that we're now, right?
Nope.
All right, um, the.